Good evening, everyone. Welcome to June 27th Board of Selectmen meeting. We'll start it tonight as we always do with the Selectmen's Liaison Report, so open it up for public comment. We'll hear from our Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager this evening, Ellen, so Director of Administrative Services. In terms of the subject matter for tonight, we have a Hazard Mitigation Plan that was distributed that we'll review and adopt tonight. We'll talk about a change of officer at Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza. We'll open up discussion around a cell tower project, to wit, the scope, the potential public process, et cetera. Look at TBW policies, talk about a debt sale that the town was successful in recently achieving some very low borrowing costs. Propose to extend the Sunset Clause for the Climate Advisory Committee to the end of the year. And then go to the subject matter of the VASC, which I think met yesterday, is that right, Dan and Barry?
Yes, yes.
Number of new appointees and incumbents for boards and committees. We'll do an approval of minutes, and then barring any other topic, we'll adjourn. With that, I'll open for Liaison Reports to my right, Mr. Halsey.
I have nothing for this time.
Dan?
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Barry?
A couple of things, I attended the library trustees meeting last week. And actually, a lot of stuff that I was gonna talk about, they sent to us in this little packet. A lot of the activities that are going on this summer, the place is packed. They're doing a lot of new programming, bringing new people into the library. They have raised a lot of money from donors, which is a good thing. And so, they're really, they're really cranking. One thing that will...
One conversation, guys.
One thing that they asked us to look into for maybe perhaps November Town Meeting is to tweak their fund, which, as you recall, they're able to collect fines and things that goes into their trust fund. The way it's situated right now is that they are only allowed to spend it on materials, but a lot of the funds that go in there are for, if people use the copy machine or things like that. So they can't spend the money on some of the things that they have costs on, they can only spend it on books and materials. So they've asked us to take a look at potentially tweaking some of the uses that are in their funds. So, hadn't had a chance to talk to Bob about that, but seems like a reasonable request. The other thing I did with Dan, attended the VASC, we'll learn more about that later, tons of appointments, reappointments. And then also, last week, I attended, actually with Chairman Arena, a meeting here in this room with the Rabbi from Bedford, some of the people from HREC and other folks around, just sort of beginning to come to terms in dealing with a strategy for some of the graffiti, swastika graffiti that's come around town. So that was a preliminary meeting, a lot of good ideas, a lot of energy in the room, a lot of positive stuff that I'm really excited that, you know, that we're trying to tackle as a town. So, more on that as it unfolds this summer.
Good, thank you. Andy?
Yeah, so, thanks, John. So, I liaised onto the Climate Advisory Committee and the Town Forest Committee, both of which met week before last. And I was out for surgery, so I couldn't attend, but I contacted the Chairs and they gave me brief, three bullet point items of what they're up to that I think the board might be interested in. You know, the Climate Advisory Committee is going over the plastic bag regulation possibilities. And at their meeting, they went over what other towns have done in this regard. The Chair of the Climate Advisory Committee met with the Chair of the Bylaw Committee so that their two committees can coordinate better on these bag regulations, however they develop. And they have a pretty aggressive timeline, they're gonna be working hard this summer to have by, I think, the end of the summer, a proposed bag bylaw. The Town Forest Committee reported in that, you know, they have this project about dog etiquette in the town forest. And they are going to try to educate the public by, through an RCTV program that will focus on dog etiquette in the town forest.
Order etiquette.
Order etiquette. Yeah, I guess, right.
Dogs will be dogs.
Blame it on the dogs. They also discussed some work that, they have a consulting forester doing some work for the town forest, I think we all heard about that, they discussed that. And they are deferring something of interest to campers, perhaps. They're deferring charges of fees for the use of the town forest at this time. They need to resolve a number of outstanding issues before they move forward with that. I also attended a school committee meeting and was the only selectman there, so I'll just... It was interesting because it really confirmed what you all were saying. When can they get us a number to help with, you know, us develop an override? And they looked at it eight ways of Sundays, and it kept coming out mid-January, just like Bob had noted. Mid-January, mid-January, mid-January is about the soonest they can come out. Help with a good number that has the precision and the reliability that John had mentioned that the voters are gonna be looking for. So, that was interesting. That's it.
For myself, in addition to the meeting with the Clergy Association and Rabbi Abramson, I also met with the Reading, North Reading Town Managers on the subject of MWR and water for North Reading. And then on the 20th, I met with the FinCom and Bylaw Appointment Committee and appointed the 2017 appointments, which would expire in 2020 for both those groups.
Do you have a full vote on both?
We do.
Okay.
Any new people?
No, both incumbents, both three up, so there'll be some familiar faces.
There were three on FinCom, I think, did all three?
There is, there is, no, I believe there's eight, and I believe there's a full slate of nine.
Okay.
With that, I'll open up for any public comment. If you have a comment, please stand and give us your address. Mr. Brown?
I'm a member of the Cemetery Board of Trustees. What's information, our new director has submitted his resignation, so we're gonna be looking for a new director. Apparently, the pay is not enough to run through, that he wants to run through departments.
This is... I'm sorry.
Our Cemetery Director is leaving us.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. When did that happen, yesterday?
What's that?
Yeah, very soon, I think yesterday we got the letter.
He talked to the board tonight, and I guess he's given his resignation.
Okay.
Something like...
We went and visited to say hello, wasn't that productive?
It's hello goodbye.
Like everybody else, John, money, he took a $13,000 a year cut to come here, so...
Very good. Any other public comment? Nancy?
I'm gonna give this to Caitlin, Nancy Doctor, 371 Post Street. This is actually a copy of our agenda for the Board of Health meeting on June 21st. And I'm giving it to you because I was confused how it triggered sending a police officer to our board meeting. To the best of my knowledge, there was no, I guess, sharing with the board any imminent threat to public safety. So, you cannot see the officer when you look at our tape of our board meeting because he actually stood behind the board members. While this is confusing, my biggest concern actually is the fact that the Health Department has lost three employees in the past six months. Our Health Agent, our long-term inspector, who I believe spent her entire career in Reading, and most concerning, our public health nurse less than two weeks ago. We've reached out to the board to both of our liaisons to ask that you do some outreach to our Health Agent, to inquire as to retention. I would ask the board reach out to all three of these employees because not everything is actually related to salary in terms of resignations. It's a serious concern about retention, and I would ask that the board identify the problems and come up with some type of solutions.
Great, thank you, Nancy. Dan?
That is being worked, but we may not be replacing all those positions with people. We may be looking at consultants for at least one of those. So we are considering all that.
All right, any other public comment? Yes?
Michelle Sampee, 75, Glenmere Circle. Actually, I had a request and a question. So, the request is, I actually watched the end of your meeting two weeks ago, I had to leave, and the discussion that you had about the timeline in regards to the budget. And then I watched the school committee meeting, and my takeaway also was January 19th is pretty much the earliest. So, my request is for your board to consider voting to commit to the April 3rd ballot question so that the community knows that the override is indefinite. I completely understand that the whole process you have to go through to determine a number is separate from that. So, that was the request. And then the question was, if my memory serves me correctly, in FY '17, the projected increase for health insurance was 8%, and I'm wondering if that actual increase has come in, and we know if it's over or it's under?
I think Bob had the number, and I don't remember what he had in his head. Do you remember, Matt?
I think it was a little less than that.
Yeah, but not much.
About seven point something, maybe.
Right.
Yeah, close.
So it came in pretty close?
Right.
To the first point, I think January's still far enough away where I still have hope that between now and then, we can find a way to squeeze out a week or two. It's a little hard to project with any sort of accuracy what's gonna happen in six months. But I understand entirely, there's a schedule, there's a process, and it's out of our control, but we can provide some encouragement, and who knows? As we said, it only has to be approximate.
But my request is that this board, because you're the only board that can vote to put it on the ballot as a question, so right now, it's a maybe override for April 3rd? If your board actually takes a vote, and your board does vote, that it will definitely be a ballot question on April 3rd? I think that that's very helpful for the community because then we don't, we don't wonder, like, is it going to happen or isn't it?
I think one of the reasons we've come out so quickly with the schedule is to convey to the public that we're quite deliberate, and this is, our intention is to drive forward on that schedule. So while you may want the certainty of an announcement, the conclusion is we're working along those lines to get to that point with the certainty and the precision that the folks are gonna need.
The certainty is the closing of the warrant, that it's not gonna happen until January.
So you can't vote?
Just to save the date kind of thing we can do.
Right, I think that's what she might be talking about, is just to say that, you know, we can say, I think, with fair, you know, much certainty, that we're gonna put something on on April 3rd. You know, obviously, the more important thing is, what is the people actually gonna be voting on? And that's, obviously, needs to germinate and we'll get closer to that. But I think, if I understand your question, it's, you know, are we gonna put, will there be an override question on the ballot on April 3rd?
Exactly, yes.
You know, I mean, I speak for myself, I think, but even in all the discussions, I think we're really driving in that direction. So, I would say that that's something that people can count.
We know very well the state of towns, and all the things we said last year in terms of fire, police, public safety are more so this year with retirements. There's no question in my mind we're driving to that, so in terms of a save the date, that's already in my mind a given. The amount and the warrant article itself are the things we gotta get to, and for that, we just need a bit more data. I think we will be successful getting some data from school committee earlier than the 19th of January. It may not be perfect, but it'll be their priority list, I hope. Because that's what the public wants to hear, so that they can make a judgment. It's not just a dollar amount, it's, you know, this program, that program, this teaching, that teacher, whatever it happens to be. The same will do on the town side, so there's some subject matter behind it, it's not just a request.
Right, I think what Mr. Berman said is, what I'm really asking is that, I guess, it's, can you take the vote to commit as a board to April 3rd?
After we close the warrant.
Not until, so you cannot do that legally?
Commit to commit.
The warrant closes with the amounts. And so those gotta go in.
So you have to have the amount in order to close the warrant to say that you're putting a ballot question on?
That's what we had to do the last time. I would hope there's no question we're working in good faith towards that.
Oh, I'm not questioning that at all. I think that it's, from the last override, it was, it was very challenging for a lot of people to wrap their head around the fact that we were going to actually have an override. So my question more is, can you commit to that date outside of the process of getting the number?
Hello, Art, go ahead.
As you know, I'm more the town clerk. From an election law perspective, if they vote to put that question on the ballot, they have to, they can't back out. So, you don't wanna do that until they're ready to close the warrant.
Why though?
That's election law.
You do it once, and you do it when you're ready, and it's locked and loaded at that point. You can't commit to commit to do it, you do it once, and...
Oh, so you can't, okay.
But you should conclude from the work we've put in so far, that's the direction we're going.
You should have everybody circling out April 3rd on their calendars. And we're gonna manage toward that date.
Okay.
I think that you can count on, I think the town can count on, everybody here seems committed to putting an override on the ballot for April 3rd. And we're starting to flesh out, and will continue, from what I heard from the town manager, every couple of weeks, we'll have a discussion about the strategy, about getting to, flesh out more of the strategy of getting to...
It was actually a public schedule.
Was the public schedule a, was that an override schedule or a budget schedule?
Everything.
It's kinda part and parcel, you know, the whole works.
Yeah. I'll have to go and take another look at that. My impression was that that was the FY '19 budget.
It is, but that has to complete to get to the...
Of course, I totally get that, I totally get that. But I think to Michelle's point, that people are looking towards an open strategy for an override, an open process for a strategy towards an override, and I believe that's gonna happen. I mean, the town manager sort of steered us in that direction by saying at the end of the last meeting, when everyone had pretty much gone, that the topic will come up every couple of weeks, it's gonna be something we're gonna have to be hammering away at. So when the school committee does come out with a number, we're ready to go forward.
Ready to, I didn't realize that you had to have the number to commit. I didn't know, like, I understand you can't commit to commit. Right, okay, thank you. I think I confused everybody, but...
That's fine.
No, that's a, that's good.
Exactly, we did want to...
That's a, you know, that's the date that's circled, and everything goes backwards from there.
Okay. Any other public comment? Matt, did you have any comments?
No, other than the fact that I'm here pitching for Bob and Gene tonight, if there's any questions, but I don't have any report.
Yeah, I know Bob's out of pocket, so thank you for stepping in.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, we'll move right to the first article of discussion, which is the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And your Thursday packet was a 102-page document, I believe. I spent most of one Friday meeting.
Yeah, you have to approve that, that's just a revision. I think, I don't see Julie, Julie Mercy or maybe in the building, if there's any questions. I think she was planning to come at 7:30. But it's just a revision to the plan. Your vote will complete that, we have to revise the plan every few years. And, like you said, it's in your package, it's here, 60 pages or so.
Can we maybe table this to 7:30?
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't we table this on Julie? I had a couple of questions for her as well.
Okay, yeah, she's coming at 7:30, so we could table that.
We could go to approve debt sale or...
I think we need Sharon for that.
Yeah, Sharon's coming down later for the debt sale.
All right, guys, we're going too quickly, we're ahead of schedule.
Yeah, you guys are making good time tonight.
Let's, anybody have any questions?
We do the change of officer?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, we can do that one.
We can do that.
Right.
All right, so at Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, there's a change of management in our package. This evening was a discussion on the change of officer, I think we have a prepared motion to that effect.
Yes, we do. Move that Board of Selectmen approve the change of officer slash beneficial interest application for an annual all alcoholic beverages restaurant license, Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza of Reading LLC. Doing business is Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, 48 Walkers Brookside, Reading, Massachusetts.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Andy seconds. Any further discussion? I will note that the Police Department had no objections.
That's correct.
It's fairly ordinary and customary. Any other discussions? All those in favor of the motion? Five zero. Okay, guys, that was two minutes.
On the approval minutes?
I'm gonna return the hard copy that I gave you tonight at the very end.
They're here.
Do I need a second to...
Just a question, a couple of questions on the minutes, I speed read them. And I, and just some probably typos on the third page. Under the Human Rights Resolution, the first paragraph, Mr. Arena read the preamble and noted that it would be, I think it's placed before the board?
There's a D there.
Small thing. And then, the paragraph after that, I think, he said it would be, Mr. Berman said it would be more effective, not affected. Although it could be affected too, I suppose, but...
I think effective is probably...
Effective, yeah. And then, the last thing I had, sorry for jumping in, John, I should have waited to be ready. Is at the very end, we had a brief, maybe five-minute discussion on, Bob walked us through the budget slash override schedule, and so there was a little discussion about that, that's not in the minutes. And then also about, now of course, the name of it is skipping my mind, the lottery.
Keno.
Keno, there was this brief discussion about that, if that could be added in. And that's all, that's all I got.
The motion on the...
It was a motion on the keynote, too.
That was, so this is two weeks ago, not last week's. There was no keynote in that one.
Okay, all right. Four weeks ago.
There was a, there was a please add keynote to the next agenda.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the actual keynote vote was last week's, and these are two weeks ago.
So this is two meetings ago.
Yes.
This is too many, I retract those, that's irrelevant.
I'm sliding behind on my minutes.
Page three of the minutes, the vote to pass was 3-2, not 3-0-2. Did you guys abstain or vote against?
They opposed.
It says opposing. Any chance to get these minutes in the packet on Thursday?
Yes, I just wasn't done with them, that's why they were here.
All right, thank you.
And actually likewise, too, above the, on Mr. Berman's amendment, it was 2-2-1.
It's four against abstain, right.
That's right, yeah. 2-2-1. That's the English system, where the abstentions are in the middle. Have to ready write the dates here.
Any other proposed changes to the minutes?
No.
If not, I'll, I was in favor of the minutes as amended.
Back here.
Okay. Julie, um...
Hi. Sorry to keep you waiting.
We're way ahead of you.
Yeah, we were ahead of you.
Let's see, we were talking about the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And did you have any formal presentation tonight?
I do not have a formal presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions.
Only the questions I had is, it seemed like the 2017 mitigation steps, they're all locked and loaded in the Capitol form?
A number of them are, Ryan probably knows more about that than I do.
So there were a number of cases where the drainage pipes were insufficient diameter, like Fairview and...
Yeah, that one I think is pushed out quite a ways in the Capitol.
I thought it was this year. It's in Table 29.
I think it's like page 90 or something.
Okay, I'll try to find it. I was just surprised at how many capacity issues are kinda distributed through the town. Page 90, you said?
I think so, in the 90s maybe.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to scroll down.
Its label is 110, number 110 in the report.
Okay. It's gonna be a while.
If anybody has a quicker way...
I've been in the box up there.
Yeah, here.
It does get you close.
Okay.
Yeah, you might have to actually...
Like right up here.
It's the pages and the whole thing.
Which one were you asking about, John?
Sunnyside and Fairview.
Do like 200 maybe?
Elsewhere in the document, it describes it in the fiscal 19 Capitol Plan, I'm trying to find it.
Yeah.
Find that, too, now.
Wait, what, sorry, what was the number?
Sunnyside and Fairview.
110.
That's the whole pages in the PDF, not just the report.
Scroll down, it's actually just a little bit down there, farther down.
Have to close here.
Right there, stop.
Oh, it's the first one, yeah.
First one there, so that's described as benefit high, cost high, and priority high. And I saw elsewhere, and I'm struggling to find it now, that it said 2017 in this document. And then this table says, or the table just following this says 2024. Which of the dates is correct? Do you think the 24 date is correct?
Further date, that's correct. I don't believe it's budgeted in for this year at all. That requires an extensive study on that capacity issue.
Or to...
Sunny Side.
Primarily to match the capacity, so you don't put a bottle like downstream?
That drainage in particular needs an increase in capacity, I think to maybe 60 inches or so. That's what, we haven't designed it yet, but that's, I think, what it's calling for.
The only other question I saw is on page one, I'm sorry to say, but there was a typo.
Yes.
If I can go back up there. If you go to the page marked number one, which is physical page, nine. So just type nine in that box, go to the bottom. So it says 18,614 dot 97,000, I think you want 18,000, right? See the difference?
Ooh, gotcha.
This says 187 million, that makes sense. 18, 614,000, 18 million.
No, that's a violation.
Right.
I don't know what they mean by that.
So that's, it's, this is a million, right?
Yeah.
So that should be a thousand, so that's a point.
Right.
That's the only thing I saw.
I think that, isn't that a decimal?
I was looking closely at that, after having a quick heart attack. I thought...
I thought that was 18 million thousand, sorry.
Oh, 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 huh, hm. No, that is, so 18,000...
18,000,000 is 18 million, whereas 187 million is 187 million, see the difference?
I have a few questions for MAPC, I've noticed some other typos, so I'll add this to the list.
You know what they mean, it's just a typo.
Yeah.
Well, are we gonna be able to adopt this with, you know...
I think it's a simple errad.
I think if it's like a typo.
We can include that in the file.
Yeah, I think you can adopt it. Other than that, I didn't have...
Talking about dollars.
I understand that.
I mean, that's not a, you know, that's not a small typo. Yeah, I mean, they're asked, they're, those are damage estimates, aren't they?
Yeah, they're just damage estimates, and they're, so they're not spending, it's just estimates of what the potential damage is. My only question is, 18,000 dollars isn't a whole lot of money from a hurricane, so I think they actually do mean potentially millions of dollars. It's just the units of measure are kinda weird, I think it should be 18.6 million.
So that is, I think, 18...
I think 1886 million.
Well, no.
That's not wrong.
It's a tough pick.
I mean, as it's...
It's the same units of measure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think as it stands, it's 18... Narrative is very weak. But, but, yeah. It just is.
In the next paragraph, they use million and they mean it, and it makes sense. Just used the same one, I couldn't follow what they were trying to say. But that's the only comment I had, I went through the whole document, it took me two and a half hours to go through it, so...
And there's some repetitive...
There are several sections, particularly where you talk about the weaknesses where it's repeated. Is that by intention?
I didn't...
It appears to be to be a cut and paste that was going on here.
Yeah, and...
And you know, I mean, we're asked to adopt the plan that they're presenting, and you know, they're cutting and pasting and not proofreading.
Right, and I would just like to clarify that MAPC, like, did 99% of the work on this. I just did the coordination on the town side, so...
That's, it's real clear, Julie, that that's...
And I did read it, and I did find some typos, but I didn't feel like going back and having them edit the whole document.
It's probably enough to get an email to just correct the detail and attach it, you don't need to have them reissue it.
Should we make a motion just to make that correction to the numbers there?
Just ask them to clarify what this paragraph means.
Yes.
My only comment.
I had a, I had a comment and a question, I think for a document of this size, you know, it's not unusual to find, unfortunately, those type of typos. And I think it's, they may be following a template that requires them to repeat themselves over and over, and I mean, that's just a guess. But the question I had is sort of a, on page 74, they talk about a flooding threat at the Texco gas station. I think it was a 1%, they rated it as a run, 1% risk.
You're talking about PDF page 74?
Uh, huh, let me see.
Or number 74 in the bottom of the document.
74 in the document.
Yeah.
Yep.
This is probably a question for the DPW folks, which, which we can wait on.
There's seventy-four there, yeah.
But flooding at a gas station is, you know, is a, could, could result in, in a fair amount of contamination in, in that area.
Now, we're scrolling.
So, so do you know if, uh, if DPW plans to.
One more, Matt, keep going, right there, stop.
Yeah, just, yeah, it's right there, the one percent annual chance of flooding.
In the middle of the screen.
Texaco and, and the mobile.
Oh, seventy-one, yeah.
That just means that it's in the one hundred year flood plain, which obviously is, is still a concern, but.
Yeah.
Um. Just to clarify, what one percent annual chance of flooding means.
On page seventy-one, or seventy-four.
It's the doc, page mark seventy-four in the document.
It's eighty-two in the PDF.
Yeah, yeah, it's Motiva Enterprises' Texaco gas station, one percent annual chance of flooding. Yes. Oh, sorry, John, Jesus God, I'm used to being the chair of the board of health, so, so I'm having trouble getting out of that mode.
It's okay. Yes, Steve?
Who, who is Motiva Enterprise Texaco, is that now the shell across from the Honda dealership? Whoever called ours a Texaco once.
That's definitely in the flood zone.
It doesn't give a street address, hit it down.
That's probably a more effective way to actually give addresses, names and businesses change, so calling it something that no one recognizes seems rather silly.
It's like thirty-five walkers were driven.
Is that a parcel number?
Maybe, but if you're gonna give it a name, give it a name that you.
Well, it's got a creek behind, running behind it, so it's gotta be the one.
Yeah.
But if you had a parcel number or a street address and you describe it as a gas station.
It'd be much easier, yes.
It's like calling it the Atlantic supermarket.
Right.
It's not gonna work.
Right there anymore, yeah.
Um, so to echoes Andy, Andy's comments, this feels like to some extent it's, um, this could have been a lot tighter. Maybe it's the style of these things, I've done risk mitigation plans before, they're usually pretty tight, because they're meant to be acted upon. As you said, Julie, this is done by M A P C, so it is what it is. Any other comments from the board before we enter into a vote, John?
Just because it's, it is what it is, because it's M A P C, in my opinion, doesn't say that we should embrace it. I mean, and, you know, it's, it's theoretically something that you should, should be a living document for use, I mean, that's the point. And it's our job to review it to see if it is such a document, and personally, I don't think it is.
Yeah, it's pretty weak.
I think it's really a weak document, I mean, it may be government psychobabble, but, you know, that, that doesn't mean it has to be okay with us. And I, this is, I realize this is not your work, I've seen your work, it's never like this. So, you know, don't misinterpret what I'm saying here, Julie.
Will that mean we'd have to commend it back to someone?
I, I just intend to abstain on the vote here, I, it's not that I'm voting against this, but I can't embrace this based on what I read, that's, I guess, what I have to say.
Julie, what's the consequence of not accepting it, or Matt, I'm not sure.
Uh, well, there's two consequences that immediately come to mind, one is that we've, we retained them for twenty-five thousand dollars, most, most of which has already been paid, so we don't have a lot of funds left to have them re-edit the document. So if you wanted it fixed, we would do it in-house, which is, if that's what you want, I'm happy to do that. And then the second thing would be that we would be delaying FEMA adopting it, and so we would be outside of our five-year window to update it.
You're already outside of that, because it was last out in ten, so you're already out, so that's not a new risk.
We are. It's not a huge issue, it's, because this really puts us in the running for grants, it doesn't impact our disaster relief funding or anything like that.
Are there grants, are there grants that we're like imminently trying to apply for?
There aren't any right now that we have applications pending for, no, but.
But they, they come out.
I think I got one at a time, John, sorry.
So Julie, we've hired them.
Yes.
We've paid them.
Right.
Most of the money.
Right.
I mean, in my world, it's typical that you get what you pay for, and if we've paid for it and we wanted a certain thing.
Right.
I mean, shouldn't, why should we have to pay additionally for their weakness?
We can push back on them.
I mean, that's just, you know, that's just kind of the businessman in me, I mean, you know, if I'm gonna pay twenty-five thousand dollars for something, and I have an expectation that I'm gonna have a living document that can be embraced and utilized, that's what I expect. I mean, that's just, and I'm, I'm really, I mean, I'm trying to walk a line here between putting an enormous amount of work on our own,
Right.
our own team, which I'm not interested in doing, and recognizing that this is not the work of our team. You know, this is the work that we paid for, and it's not very good.
I mean, I would also say that I didn't actually get a chance to review it until this week, um, because I was very busy with other things, so unfortunately, I didn't give them comments earlier.
This is not a complaint with, yeah, this is not, this is not a complaint with you, Julie, not what, not remotely a complaint.
I, I understand that, I'm just saying that in an ideal world, I could have provided comments earlier, before we paid them.
But did, I mean, did they get it to us when, I mean, I mean.
We, we did have a comment period in February, it was a ten-day period, that's what's required by FEMA, so we did that, it was on the website, some people provided comments.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think pushing back, I mean, you said we paid most of the money, which means that we're holding back, so.
We just got the invoice this week, yes, so.
Say.
We have eighty yet, right?
It's in process.
Well, we can push the, we can push pause on that, what, is this lack of effort contracting, or did, was it a fixed firm fixed price?
But. Um, it's a fixed price.
So you got every recourse to go back and say it doesn't meet scope of work.
Right.
Maybe I'm exaggerating this, I don't know how everybody else feels.
I think you're hearing other concerns here.
What did it look like before they started?
So, we had a plan, the twenty-ten plan.
Right, was it substantially similar with the?
I think it is substantially similar, yes.
How much effort would it be to push, for town resources to push back and say, hey, go fix the following five bullet points?
Probably not a big deal, I mean, I was emailing with the guys that did this earlier today, they're very accessible.
Why don't we push pause on the payment?
Okay.
If you can.
Okay.
I'm not saying stop it, but just hit pause, and I'm willing to mark it up and put my comments in.
Would a provisional acceptance be okay, subject to final?
I don't want to overcomplicate it, why don't we, why don't we just do it once and get it in?
Alright. Accept, I think, is the adopt.
I have my own comments, which I'll edit and send to Julie and to Matt, I don't know if the rest of the board feels similarly. Why don't we do that by?
I'll say as amended.
Why don't we, why don't we do that by our next meeting at latest, they'll, in other words, they'll be in and, and ready for review by our next.
So you don't want to do the motion tonight?
I don't know how you accept something that's subject to being amended, right?
We do it from minutes, but we do the changes on the.
Yeah, but you already have, you already have the amendments in there.
But the amendments are known, so.
You're right.
I'd be inclined to pass on that.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board?
An extra two weeks is not gonna make a break.
Yeah, I agree.
No, and we just don't want to miss out on any grants, but I doubt there's any grants coming through.
I mean, is anything looming that you want to do in the next two weeks?
Not related to this, no.
I, oh, Mr. Chair.
There's always something looming.
There's always something looming.
I agree with John's concept that this should be a living document, it would be great, a great, a good resource for the, for the citizens. I just don't think we're gonna get that out of, out of this process, unfortunately.
Well, but the obvious error is in omission, should be correct.
Yes, yeah, 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 I, I think this is sort of a thing that we have to have so we can apply for grants.
We gotta just clean it up some, I mean, it, look, it's not gonna get, it's not gonna be perfect.
I do think to some degree they use a template, as Andy mentioned, but we can definitely make it tighter.
For example, it just, what caught my eye was, if you go to PDF slide fifty-one, I was going through these tables, slides, rows and rows of tables, just go to fifty-one in the top, Matt? And then hit control minus minus, hold, hold, press the control key down and hit minus minus twice.
Minus minus.
There you go, good. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to take away from this table, it says it snowed, but there's no damage, and these are supposed to be hazards that were reported, is it just saying, yeah, it snowed that day? Is it meant to convey anything more than that? And there's four pages of this.
Yes.
I just didn't know what to, and then at the end, it's got a token forty, if you go to the very end of it, it's got a seventy thousand, a five thousand dollar event, it sums to four million, I don't know what to, what to conclude of that, there's no, so what?
The, these are documents that are paid for by the pound, John.
I, I was.
To John's point.
I mean, honestly.
John's point, if I'm paying for something, I want to know what I'm getting, and I want to get it, I don't know what value this thing delivers, unless it's a pro forma thing that we need for.
I think it may be, I mean, if you look at, if you look at a standard twenty-one E, which you ask an environmental firm to do about, you know, I've got, I've got one building that I want to kind of just see what the risks are.
Yeah.
I get a thirty-five-hundred-page document, which basically lists every address within, you know, a half a mile, and it's like, what, why, I don't need this, but if that's just the format that it is, and my, my feeling is that this is, it falls into the same. And they're required by the, their, their regulations, I don't know if that's the case for this, and some people, some poor sod has to review all of those pages at the state.
Yeah, um, do we actually execute against this? Do we use it in any operational sense, this document?
I think it complements the SEP plan to some degree, but.
I mean, do we crack this open at any time?
This is not binding, I mean, it's not binding to us to any action specifically. Do we crack it open? No.
So in other words, we gotta buy poundage for twenty-five thousand in order to be able to satisfy some regulation that allows us to apply for grants, that's really what this is. So in other words, they put a gun to our head and they say, pay twenty-five thousand dollars, and you do this, and then you're allowed to do other stuff.
Or you could do it yourself, right?
You could do it yourself, and then she can't do anything else.
Yep. And I believe that there was an effort to do this in-house before I came on, and it just, it was just too much additional work, so that's why we went out to them.
So they already own the pro, they already own the, the pro forma.
Right.
Right.
But this was paid for by a grant, correct? We didn't pay for this.
No, this was not paid for by a grant.
This was not paid for by a grant?
No. Not to my knowledge, no.
Paid for by a tax payer. Because I, 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 I thought I, I checked that, but obviously, I, I got it wrong.
No, I believe it was November town meeting of twenty-fifteen where the funds were allocated for this, from the general fund.
Yeah, the, yeah, I, I'm in the same place, so why don't we take this up, have all your comments in, in time, so we can review them in our, in our next meeting in two weeks, and we'll go through them then, and we'll take it from there, and we'll, we'll pass on any acceptance of this document tonight. Any other questions from the board? Alright, thank you, Julie.
No problem.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, it's not.
Don't mean, you're not on trial here in any way.
No, I'm, I'm totally fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be back in two weeks, we can chat.
Alright, I have a schedule here, if you want to do some of the appointments now, we're waiting till eight o'clock.
Let me get back to my table of contents.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess we could do appointments, the board and committees.
Sure, this is our annual appointment, reappointment process for all positions that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen. I want to say at the outset, we have one vacancy on each of the three very, following very important boards. One vacancy full on the zoning Board of Appeal, one on Community Planning and Development Commission, and one on the Conservation Commission, so we welcome applicants for any or all of those positions, those are very important boards, who have a very important regulatory function. I'm gonna sort of do these in serial blocks, there are a couple of additions I will have to what you see printed here, just taking my notes from last night, we're doing everything together here. I'm gonna add as my first, the Animal Control Appeals Committee, Tina Olson. Now, when I make the motion, the understanding is it's determined through six-thirty-twenty, unless I've stated otherwise.
Okay.
So move to appoint Tina Olson to the Animal Controls Appeal Committee, Damas Kowet to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Nick Pernice to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Associate Position for a term ending six-thirty-nineteen, Harry Simmons to the Board of Registarians, David Zeke to the Climate Advisory Committee, Jeffrey Everson to the Climate Advisory Committee, Associate Membership for a term ending six-thirty-nineteen, Elizabeth Kleppice to the Commissioner, Commissioners of Trust Funds, Barry Berman to the Commissioners of Trust Funds, and Kevin Briere to the Associate Membership on the Commissioners of Trust Funds, Term Ending six-thirty-nineteen, so we'll take that block first.
Okay, do I have a second?
Okay.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question, normally do we get resumes for these people when they apply? Or when they, they apply to be on these boards?
It's an application form, they fill out their interest, they often include a resume or a statement of interest or some backstory.
And that goes to the better.
The first time, Andy, they will give us a complete set of resume and application, second time that Jim has just returned a letter to the town clerk saying, I want to re-up, and that's usually sufficient. We don't always call the board member in for re-uppage.
Uh-huh.
At the discretion of the VAS, we will call selected boards, and sometimes if there are questions we might have about, you know.
And we gen, and we generally interview new people, right?
So none of these, these are not new people?
No, no.
Oh, okay, so they've been doing the job already?
Uh, let's see, except for Jeff Everson who's moving, nope, that's right, he's re-upping, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And Barry's just left off the list for Commissioners of Trust Funds, and he's our nominee.
I, the only reason I ask is because I don't want to vote on somebody who I don't know whether or not they know how to do the job, but if they've been doing the job, then, okay, thanks.
Good question.
So this is a recommendation from the VAS, who does, they tend to vet them, so.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second? You want to block, you do these in blocks?
Yeah, I'll do them four blocks.
Alright, all those in favor of the aforementioned names? Five, zero.
If there's any questions, just please, all right, move to, to appoint Rebecca Long with the Conservation Commission, Sally Hoyt as Constable, Karen Goncalves Dolan and David Tuttle to the Community Planning and Development Commission, John Parsons, George Wetmore, Sandra Schaefer, I guess it is, to the Council on Aging, and Jana Stafford, Associate Membership on the Council on Aging, Term Ending six-thirty-nineteen, overall, I think incumbents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second, further discussion, all those in favor? Five, zero.
Move to appoint Nancy Zimlak, Rosemary Lewis, and Donna Schenkel to the Cultural Council, and Mc, new candidate whom we interviewed, Megan Fidler-Carry to Associate Membership on the Cultural Council for a term ending six-thirty-eighteen, Eileen Bornstein to the Historic District Commission, Ron Weston and Samantha Couture to the Historical Commission, Samantha was an associate and is moving up from associate to full, so she's been interviewed in the past, Linda Snow-Doxer and Kyung Yu to the Human Relations Advisory Committee, that Kyung was inadvertently left out, and Joshua Goldlust to H R A C as an Associate Member, Term Ending six-thirty-eighteen, and Jamie Michaels to H R A C as an Associate Member, Term Ending six-thirty-nineteen. Let's do the P B C, too, John Coote and Nancy Toomey to the Permanent Building Committee, Michael Bean as a Permanent Build, Building Committee Associate Member, Term Ending six-thirty-nineteen, those are all incumbents.
Do I have a second, Barry seconds?
By the way, did I mention Steven Sadjwick, M A P C?
No.
I think we left him out, we didn't vote on him, but I believe he's re-upping. We didn't get paperwork? Oh, we talked about that, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have put him back, so I didn't make the motion, I don't need to put him in, okay, we're good, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion, I have it seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero.
Okay, move to appoint Carl McFadden to the Running ICE Arena Authority, Adam Chase, Richard Hand to the Recreation Committee, Gil Congdon to the Rec Committee as an Associate Member for a term ending six-thirty-nineteen, Neil Cohen to the R M L D Citizen Advisory Board for a term ending six-thirty-twenty, I think we recently appointed them, but only to fill up the term that just ended, so. That's a question on anyone's mind here. Farouk Najmi to the Town Forest Committee, and Nancy Doctor to the Town Forest Committee as an Associate Member on six-thirty-nineteen, Will Finch to the Trails Committee for a term ending six-thirty-twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Barry seconds again, any further discussion? Goes in favor? Five, zero.
Uh, we will need to, in the future, make appointments to the Board of Cemetery Trustees, Board of Health, I think that's.
R C T V.
R C T V Board of Directors, yep, and the, I think there's a spot on the Running Housing Authority that we appoint, but we need to have some discussion around that, maybe as a board, and maybe we'll just do that up here at the board level.
We have one more appointment to the R C T V, we have two, and we have one, our current, one of our current ones has indicated an interest in stepping back.
Is that, is that Steve?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we should probably just put out also with the three, you know, with the three, other, three regulatory ones that, looking for people for R C T V as well.
Sure, very critical time, and.
Is there anything else going on?
And has anyone stepped up for the cemetery or housing authority?
We're not sure of their situation.
We're absent paperwork, I think, in the cemetery.
For the cemetery, we have. For the Cemetery, we have, we have some, but not all of it.
Yeah, it's not ready.
Um, we have a Housing Authority. We have paperwork for re-appointment, though.
Okay.
And how about the Board of Health?
We have some issues to resolve there. Let's leave it at that.
Okay. Let's see, we're still a little ahead of schedule here.
Let's just thank all those people who raised their hands and, actually.
And thank any who have retired from service, too.
Actually, actually, we should spend a few minutes there. Reading is really blessed to have this many volunteers that are willing to invest their time and energy in their, their, uh, creative talents.
Yes.
Work in these various areas. Uh, not every town has this luxury. Not every town has, uh, this number of folks that are willing to volunteer and spend their good time and energy, so we're really blessed. I also wanna thank you guys on the VAS. I know it's, uh, time-intensive to go through this. It's nice when you have folks that you know and they've been attracted to you, um, but I do appreciate you guys putting the time in for, um, to help us prescreen.
And, and, and one thing I'll say is that, you know, some of the people that we talk to are new to town, and they're here a year, two years, three years. Um, don't really know a whole lot of people, but really like the town and wanna get back, and, um, it's, it's great. I mean, you know, a lot of times we see the same people all the time. Not a knock on the same people all the time, because we need them, but it's really great when you see new people, and, um, that's just a testament to people really wanting to get involved, and it's, uh, it's fun to, it's fun to do, so.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out what we can do next.
How about the debt sale?
We need Sharon. We need Sharon.
Oh, okay.
Do you wanna go get her? I'm sure she'll, I'm sure she'll appreciate doing it earlier.
Are we ready for the D P W?
Yeah, why don't we do that? D P W policies are, we're way out of order. Actually, is Jeff here?
You have the right people here?
Yeah, well, um, Jane Consoler is here and Ryan, um, is here, the Town Engineer. Um, Jeff Zager could not make it tonight, but he, they can discuss the policies.
Sorry to do this out of order, guys. We're way ahead of schedule and, uh, which is rare for us.
We all wanna get home early.
It's 'cause Bob's not here, I bet.
Must be him that makes this. He never says anything, no.
Like man, I'm pitching in tonight, so, uh, just briefly, I believe you've received the memo for the, the policies and the.
From the flyer, didn't my packet?
Do you know page it is in our Thursday package? Just a second.
I think it's buried in the packet. I can just give you a brief, uh, background of, of how we got to this point. I'd say back in mid-two thousand sixteen, um, D P W staff have gotten together also with the Collector and D P W Director, Assistant Director, and myself to discuss some fees that we had some issues with. Also, some small, um, abatement policies that we had issues with. And when we got together in a group and we started talking about these issues that we, we had, it became a sounding board to more problems and issues and policies and procedures that we haven't addressed in decades because, uh, we just hadn't. Uh, that being said.
Reoccurring theme.
We've had several meetings and, um, it turned into looking at fees, to looking at more of a broader, asking questions of what the philosophy of the town and the department is in regards to where we wanna go with these fees and these procedures. And there's a few questions in particular that the department needs to ask to move forward before we even get into that point where we start soliciting, um, other communities, uh, peer communities, not only in the M W R A because it affects our water and sewer rates, but also in communities that are adjacent to us to see what they do, how they go about, um, certain operations, what they do for fees, what they charge for fees. I don't know if you're aware, but the town generally does not charge too many fees to residents as far as, um, water and sewer. What we're looking at is maybe more, going more towards, um, going after developer fees, which we lack in. So, that's one aspect of what we're looking at. Another aspect is, um, policies from the Board of Public Works that were intended to be adopted, may have been adopted, but they're not currently adopted. So, one case in point is the, um, driveway rules and regulations, which we historically practiced, have always practiced, but I don't know if it has been formally adopted when they adopted the Board of Public Works, when the Board of Selectment absorbed duties of the Board of Public Works.
So, it's a practice. It's operational, but it's not a policy.
Correct, and we're finding that there's a lot of those. Um, and it, it may have been absorbed, and this may be a, a question for council, that it, when, when the Board absorbed the Board of Public Works, they may have just absorbed those, and I don't know if we have to absorb every single or adopt every single policy separately.
So, let me go back on the fees question, Ryan. So, um, other than the developer fees, are there other obvious cases that you come to mind in terms of D P W fees? I could think of one, like a second meter. We talked about that. That's still a discussion.
That's something that's come up on the table, also has come up on the table with the, with the Selectment.
And I think it's still in process. It's due to come back up.
Correct, that, that, that's one thing, um, that's come up in our discussion. Um, hasn't been a late, lengthy discussion about that because you haven't finished your discussion about that.
What are some others, though, besides that?
Just off the top of my head, some of the, the developer fees, we, we have no fees for fire flow testing, annual testing, backflow testing, hydrant flow testing. These are things that are charged in other towns that we, we don't generally charge.
Those are charged to, to development projects or not to?
Those, those would generally be charged to commercial and development projects, correct.
But it's essentially compliance or capacity testing before you, you permit a.
Correct, or annual testing that's required for backflows or fire.
Is the proposal from D P W to come back with a proposal on this?
Abs- absolutely, absolutely. We, we've gone through several meetings where it seems, as you get involved in these discussions, you ask one more question and it, and it becomes an ongoing question.
Absolutely.
So, we, we've listed sort of a methodology of how we wanna proceed and how we wanna go about that. And you'll see in the memo that listed on there is actually fees is the last step because we have, we have to ask ourselves some certain questions that, that's gonna develop a po, a, a philosophy of, of where we wanna go.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think to D P W's credit, we maintain our, uh, water lines right up to the resident's home. In other words, the, the service entry is maintained by D P W.
That's true.
Uh, are we contemplating charging fees for that? Are we gonna leave things the way they are?
That's, that's one of the areas that we're looking at. That's, that's one of the major areas that we're looking at, whether or not, where ownership begins and where it ends. And that's gonna go hand in hand also with a few other questions that we do have. Um, we're also part of this is, is the lead audit that we're, we're doing right now. Everyone's heard.
Yep.
And we're, we're ver, we're very thorough in what we're doing for the lead audit, and we're about fifty percent done with that. And once that is completed, we'll know exactly what we have in our system for, for lead, um, and for lead services.
This is public buildings we're talking about, not services.
Not just public buildings, since we, we have completed that. We have done, Peter, how, how, how much have we done of those?
Lead sampling?
Yes.
Schools, uh, we've, we've done, um, three-quarters of them. We've, we've done all the schools, but we've done.
We've, we've done more than what is needed to be done, and we should be able to complete those relative, the plan is to complete, complete that?
Yeah, yeah. They, they, uh, we're waiting for some, um, samples to come back that we took out two weeks ago.
And, and that's for the schools.
These are widespread problem with lead in the distribution system from street to home in general, or is that pretty new pipe?
Um, no, being that Reading is an old town and our water system, I think, was established somewhere around eighteen ninety, you're, you're going to have older material all the way up to the new material of copper. We've done a very, very good job of removing a lot of it. Just through our Chapter Ninety program, we move, we remove anything that's not copper service. When we pave a road, we make it a copper service.
About up to the home? Because if you're gonna start charging fees to do this, that, that's a significant expense people might have to.
And that's one of the reasons why we're, we're looking at that. Um, generally speaking, Chapter Ninety is, um, when we come across a, a fully lead service, we replace it with a valve.
Okay.
Chapter Ninety's, majority of our system is either galvanized or cement-lined services. And those only have a very small, we call them a lead gooseneck, and, and it's maybe about a, a foot or two of lead from the main to the beginning of the service. That gets replaced when we do the Chapter Ninety program. And we do about around fifty to sixty services a year, a year.
That much is still in the system?
Um, we replace cement-lined services, those small little goosenecks. I just wanna make everyone clear that we treat our water and M W R treats their water, you know, the right way, so we're not leaching out lead. And we sample for lead and copper, and we don't, we do not have a problem in the, in the system, so.
You mitigate it by treating the water to maintain pH.
That's correct.
Yeah, less chlorine, more ozone.
That's correct.
Barry.
Ryan, do you have, um, a sense of the things that we don't charge for? What the cost to the town is for providing the services?
I, I can't, I can't give you an answer for that, no. Um, I can tell you that it's, we, what's provided to the residents is made up for in the rates. Um, we provide a, a, a lot of service to the residents. Leak repair, uh, very low cost as far as replacement of services that are out of sequence from, from our replacement program. Peter, is there any other ones that you can think off, off the top of your head for residential?
Uh, just when they want to renew it, um, for, for their own reasons, whether it's an iron pipe or they want to renew it, we do it at a very decent cost.
But even some of the tests that you do for commercial and, and developments that we're not charging for, obviously there's a cost, there's a cost.
There, there is a cost, and I, I can, I can tell you right off, ju, we'll, we'll just pick something that's easy, like a hydrant flow test. Generally, those are done after hours or at night, so they don't disturb the residents. Um, so, we're dealing with two, two D P W employees from the Water Division that are on overtime, performing the test because we don't allow anyone to touch our system that's not water personnel. So, they're there to witness, but not on, not only witness, to operate the valves. So, you know, you're looking at maybe an hour or two for testing on a hydrant flow test.
And remember, this is on the enterprise side, not on the tax side.
Andrew.
A question about the, the lead testing in the schools. Is, are you testing, do you mean you're testing for lead surfaces? Or, uh, surface, surfaces, lead on surfaces or lead in the, at the water fountains?
Yeah, lead in, in, in the drinking water, or, or kitchens, uh, bathroom lav faucets, uh, every source of water in the schools.
Okay, just water, not surface?
Yeah, and all the information is on our, the town's website with up-to-date, um, results. And everything has been mitigated that we've found so far, so we're on top of it.
Good. Great, thanks, you, thank you.
Back to Barry's question. How hard would it be to say, take fifteen, fifteen and sixteen as examples, and look at total, um, service, just instances of these types of Service A, Service B, Service C, Service D, and just number of instances of each, and then we could typify what, for example, hydrant flushing.
Correct.
Verification.
It, that wouldn't be difficult at all for us.
It's gonna get that tabulation, whenever it's convenient, don't rush it, but that might let us start to figure out what real benefit it's worth. Might, might be still a small.
Absolutely, and we, when we provide the packet for whatever recommendations or just looking at our fees in general versus the comparable communities, we'll have that, all in that packet. Uh, so, you'll, you'll have that information on our breakdown of what we feel is costing the town, but also what the, what the other surrounding towns and also communities in the M W R A are also charging and not charging, and how they calculate that.
When do you expect to have a view of that?
Realistically, I would say, um, I would think in, in a few months. This time of year is a very busy time of year, so it's really tough for us, for me to.
We had it in the fall. I know we're gonna have budget and all that other stuff. That might be an interesting topic to cover.
I think, I think shooting for the.
Budget discussion.
I think shooting for the fall. I think that, I think that's realistic.
It's an important piece of information, that question that both of you have raised, I think, particularly in light of all the other things that are, you know, going on in town around finance and budget, so.
Just we, we cover, I mean, I know it's on the enterprise side, so it's not, it's not on the tax rate, but it's in the water bill. It's, if it could save, you know, a couple of cents on the water bill, you know.
They're user fees, as opposed to a general, generalized benefit. These are incremental tasks where citizens are asking us to do, with a fee attached to it.
Yeah, I mean, if that is, you're doing fifty of those, if that's a big number, if that turns into a big number. I mean, if that was a pass-through, then all of a sudden, everybody's.
You referring to the renewal of the services for the Chapter Ninety?
Talking of, so, for example, um, the work that you do on a homeowner's property from the street to their home. Currently, we're absorbing that.
Correct.
So, I mean, so you look at that, for example, and you say, okay, it's a big number, it's a small number. I, I don't have no idea what the number is, and I'm not asking you for the number. Um, but everybody's paying for that. Right?
If they're requesting the renewal, the, the, the cost is on the homeowner from the street to the house. If they request the renewal, if it's.
But if it's damage.
If it's damaged, if it's a leak beyond repair, whatever's determined by the water supervisor at the time, it's replaced by the town.
By the town.
So, you're correct in that instance.
Right. Uh, the only reason I bring it up is, look, people wanna know how their money's being spent and how they're spending their money. And I think it's important for us to, you know, be as clear with them as we can. I realize that because it's an enterprise side rather than a real estate tax side, I mean, you know, that means it's in the water bill, but that's everybody. You know, I mean, whether you're a homeowner or whether you're a renter, I mean, i- it's everybody. So, when you start to, people have made us feel like we need to look under, you know, we need to lift up every rock and make sure that, you know, everything under there's being handled the correct way. And so, I just, you know, this is occasioned, you know, to maybe look at that. Because, you know, I've been working with Bob on some of the other policies. I know just what you're up against. I mean, Matt and I and Bob and Gene sat down and, you know, we spent three hours just with the clear red flags that were flapping in the breeze before you could even, and we didn't start asking questions. But once we did, I, you're, I get where you're coming from. I mean, it is a can of worms.
This we inherited from an elected board's policy in the day, right?
Well, all of them, really, but this one specifically is an elected board that was folded in, so.
Who, who knows what had happened through the years after it was absorbed by the Selectmen and what hadn't happened?
Or why.
Why.
It, it is hard to write good policy. I will say that, even elected or unelected.
This is good work, Ryan. I'm looking forward to what you come back with. To John's point, we're looking at, uh, fees for user services for fire and emergency transport. We're looking for fees for town forests. We're looking for fees for parking. This is another area that's an opportunity that's proportionalized to whoever's getting the benefit, so.
Just to be clear, we have started searching and, and seeing what other member communities.
Right, you mentioned that. I'm curious to see what that is.
So, I mean, we, we have going down that road, and I think it's reasonable to say that we'll have something available in the fall.
Good, thank you.
That's great. No, I think this is really a great discussion. I mean, you opened it up, you know, a good discussion here.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Think we can move to the cell tower. Do we have a, this is not a public hearing. We don't have a notice.
Uh, not technically, no.
It's a public process, not a public hearing, right?
I need to read that. I will if you'd like me to.
Please.
Okay, we have a public notice. This notice is to inform you that the Board of Selectmen will be having a preliminary discussion regarding a proposed cell tower adjacent to the Auburn Street Water Tank. This item is scheduled to start at eight o'clock P M on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, at Town Hall and the Selectmen's Meeting Room. The town is proposing a cell tower to help address many issues, including, but not limited to, replacement of the water tank, overcrowding and structural deficiencies to the tank due to the cellular, cellular equipment, safety hazards, increased public safety coverage, and poor cell coverage. The intent of this meeting is to discuss the scope of the project, possible timeline, participants, including public safety entities, and involvement of the public. The butters have been invited and are welcome to attend. It is important to note that this is one of many meetings open to the public, and the Selectmen will not be taking a vote on this item at this time.
Before we open it to public comment, any of the comments by the board in terms of what was in the package?
Is there gonna be a presentation, some, some kind here?
There is no formal presentation. This is just a discussion.
Okay.
But this is a follow-up to the presentation that.
Right, if you remember.
Gave us.
That's true.
Remember in the fall, I believe, October or November.
So, to refamiliarize myself, we have maintenance issues on the tower.
Correct.
On the, on the water tank.
Correct. Um, just some brief background, and I'll just, just, yeah, everyone can remember what we're dealing with here. The, the tank is, we're at the time where we have to repaint the tank. We're actually past that time. Something that should happen every ten to fifteen years, and we're way past due. That being said, in order for us to paint the tank, all the cell carriers have to come off the tank. In the discussions that we had had prior, um, we also thought it would be a great time to look at a life, life cycle cost of painting versus a replacement of a tank. We shortly learned right around the year fifteen, that's the break even point of where we would have to paint again and the crossover of a new tank. So, long story short, the, the, we've decided to replace the tank, it, it just makes more sense at this time. That being said, we still have the issue with the carriers on the tank. We've discussed for numerous reasons why we would like to have the carriers off the tank. One, for maintenance in the future, that's the obvious one. Two, there's a lot of deep, uh, DEP regulations that require us to have personnel with the carriers when they wanna go and, and work on.
Wanna go up.
We don't wanna have that happen anymore. We have structural deficiencies on our tank due to the carriers overloading our tank and overcrowding. There's OSHA violations with overcrowding of the catwalk. There's corrosion issues where you have dissimilar metals touching and, and bracketing. And there's a few other reasons.
Security, I would think.
Security's one of the ones that I alluded to with the DEP regulations. And also, I mean, we have poor cell coverage in town, that's to be noted, not a driving factor, but it is a factor. We also have the factor of increased public safety, uh, radio, which we would, that would increase pub, public safety.
And the public safety antenna, if I understand it, is the direct top of the tower, the hardest one to get to.
That is correct, that is correct. And important to note that we do not have full mobility of our ladder which goes around the tank, which we're supposed to. It, there's a ladder that swivels.
What's hung on there.
So there's a lot of issues, a lot of issues. So, we have a tank project, we have a cell tower project if you look at them, but they're, they have to happen concurrently.
I know this affects the cell tower planning, but how would you replace the head provided by the tank while you're replacing the tank? Is, are you gonna reinforce and enhance the tank in another area of town?
So, and again, we haven't really gotten to the design, we, we've, we've, we have a consultant with, for the cell tower, Paul Bergman and Associates. But we haven't gotten to the design and, and really gone down the hydraulic road yet, but we do have another tank in town, Bear Hill Tank. It's slightly larger. We feel as though that, that should be able to handle our capacity needs for the time being while we take that tank out of service. Again, that's all gonna be flushed out when we do the hydraulic model.
Nothing onsite is, is a replacement structure for temporary?
No, ideally, in a perfect world, what would happen is, cell tower would go up, carriers would go on, come off the tank, we demo the water tank, water tank goes up. So, the condition of how high that the cell tower is is gonna be determined on how high the water tank is because it has to be above. And also where a location of each is dependent on where the.
So from a redundancy standpoint, where are we on the MWRA redundancy? I mean, are we there where they've got that opportunity?
We're close, we're close, we're on the final leg.
So it almost makes you wonder, I mean, once we have that in place, we don't have to worry quite so much about the downtime of that reserve.
I would always err on the side of caution when it comes to our water storage and supply, as we know, we had the, we had the fire. We were able to manage that with the help of the Water Division and MWR and, um, you know, talking to some neighboring communities that also pull off of the MWR. They didn't take as much that day. So, storage is very important and that means. So we always wanna have a redundant storage.
Yeah.
So it's good that we have two. Um, there is discussion of getting rid of Bear Hill at some point. So this is ideal, that this gets replaced now before that happens.
Will the size of the tank be bigger that you replace with?
I, I believe hydraulically, we're, we're gonna look at that, but I, I believe hydraulically, no, it, it might not have to be bigger, but we might look at elevation. We might try to increase it a little bit to gain a little bit more pressure in the system. But again, we have, we have the, the fact that we're having a redundant supply from the MWR, that, that's gonna be crucial. It's at the thirty-six inch water line that goes through the town, there's some storage just in that pipe alone.
Yeah.
A few million gallons, so.
I'm talking about redundancy, you're talking about the link through Woburn and Stonem?
Yeah, so the portion that we're on, there was, let's say, three phases to that. One was the first phase up through Woburn, then there was a phase down Oak Street and Summer Avenue and Hopkins Street, Main Street. And now they're on the phase in Stonem. That's the key phase, once that's done, the redundant loop will be done.
So the system's not pressurized that way? Didn't it used to be a gravity pressurization when we had the wellfields from the towers?
Everything is being fed via gravity or pump from the MWR Quavon reservoir.
Okay, so those are just storage vehicles.
That, that amount of piping though probably is as much water sitting in those redundant pipes as you're gonna have in that tank.
Right. That also helps maintain our hydraulic grade line as well.
Yep.
Pressure in the system.
What do you think the total cycle time to deconstruct, reconstruct, from an expectation setting point of view?
I believe from our last meeting we had with the carriers, which Bob was in attendance to, we were hoping to have at least a cell tower restricted sometime, um, I think summer of August, September of next year. Eighteen. That has to happen before the tank. If we're, if we're looking at two, it's to happen together. That has to happen before the tank and the tank will be, I would say, realistically, a year after that, just.
So where are we on our leases with them?
We have one, is it T-Mobile?
Yeah, T-Mobile, um, if, they expire actually in November, they're looking for a two-year extension on their lease. Everybody else, when they move over, they're all under lease right now, when they move over to the new cell tower, they'll get new leases. So the only one I'm dealing with right now is T-Mobile.
So when we take them down, the lease is stopping, is that what it, is that, so we don't have an obligation if the tower's down? Or if the tank is down?
An obligation to.
So I guess what I'm trying to find out is.
Yep.
We have tenants. Okay, to simplify this for me, I mean, essentially, we've got tenants. Do they have a lease? Yes or no? Are they month to month? What is the situation as far as our being able to displace those tenants? Either into something else that we construct that it, it's mutually agreeable? Is that where we start tearing up their leases and starting over again?
There's a disruption such that they're on the tower on day one but can't go on, the tank on day one but can't go on the tower on day two. What's the obligation or liability?
Do we have a service level agreement with them?
Well, we've all, we've been at all the meet, all the carriers and they're at the meetings that we're having, so we, we're still in the preliminary stages of it. But I'd imagine that, you know, once we get everything all ready, um, we would actually put out an RFP and they would move over and, and they could bid on what, what, part of the cell tower they wanna be on, but until then, they, they have long-term leases.
Yeah, so they, we're obligated to.
Yeah.
What happens if that's interrupted? What's our liability if that's interrupted?
I can, I could check that out with, with the town council, I mean, I don't, I think we're looking at really no interruption, I mean, if we build the, the tower and then.
We wouldn't be moving them off of that until we had something to put.
Exactly.
Correct, but if something unforeseen.
Yeah, the tank sits there with the top, and unless you, then you have a replacement tower if that's.
Right.
The course we take.
That's all new equipment.
Temporary scaffolding.
Right, they're, they're gonna put new stuff there, but we say move just to, you know.
Well, we'll have new leases too.
Right.
In other words, we have the same tenants, we're just moving them to nicer apartments.
I guess what I'm, yes, I'm trying to understand what our ability to break the lease is, 'cause that's essentially what we're doing.
Well, yeah, we'll be, and sort of renegotiating, but they're, they want this too, you know, they, they.
Well, they want better service.
Right, and so we're all on the same page here, so, I mean, anything could happen, but we're not foreseeing that happening. They're all on board, we have meetings with them, like I said, T-Mobile's the only one that expires early and we're dealing with them directly.
Any other questions, Dan?
Yep, how the meetings with the neighbors gone regarding, you know, aesthetics of the design of the tower?
That's one of the reasons why we're here tonight to discuss how we wanna proceed with moving forward to the public. Again, I have Paul Bergman, um, who's a consultant for the town, um, to help us in that process as far as whether we do renderings or what, what we do and to open up that to the public. We haven't had any meetings regarding the public yet.
We, we invited the butters tonight?
Yes.
I believe they were noticed.
Are they folks here?
We have butters.
Yeah.
Good.
Why don't we, um, if you know other questions, why don't we open up for public comment?
I think that's a good idea.
If you wanna say something, please stand, state your name, your address and.
Okay, I'd love to talk on this.
Please.
Mark Delaney, twenty-six Beacon Street. My boxer used to, what, you have the little dog?
Uh, yeah, man, oh, yeah, I see you on the road, right, yeah.
I gotta say, I'm really disappointed. This is the first notice I've received of this. They've already got this thing built. They haven't even talked to the, the people directly affected by this, the neighborhood. Not, not one person on this board talked about the neighborhood and how it affects the neighborhood. They're talking about a hundred and sixty-foot tower next to a hundred and ten-foot tower. I, I mean, I'm, I'm dumbfounded that the decision's already been made and they haven't even talked to the neighborhood. Now, I appreciate that the board has to balance the interests of the town and the interests of neighborhoods. You live somewhat nearby, I don't think any of you live up by the water tower. So you can't really appreciate what it is we're talking, we're not talking about a big piece of land here. I, I've seen a rendition, uh, just by accident, by Googling it, it's like the Eiffel Tower beside the water tank. There's trees that surround that water tank. And at least during the summer, it blocks the view. Now we're gonna have this. This is a, this is not a fair process to this point. I mean, we talked about, this is the first notice, there's gonna be a number of hearings. The decision's already been made that we need to do this. What I don't understand is, we have a water tank, we have cell carriers. When we put a water tank there, the town has an obligation for the benefit of the town to maintain it. Before cell service was invented, those carriers weren't paying rent. So there was additional money to make the improvements, maintain the, the tank, and that hasn't been done. So now, what we're offering is we're gonna have another tower that you're gonna be responsible for maintaining, improving. You know, I don't have, haven't seen any analysis to justify what you said you've already decided you're gonna do. None of us have. I would also point out, 'cause I'm a little familiar with this, I mean, that the carriers, they don't own these towers, they rent. So that means we own it. But today, they're not building these towers anymore. They're doing small cell sites where they're putting them on poles. They're putting them on telephone poles, lighting poles. All the carriers are moving in this direction, and then what happens when ultimately it's all coming from, you know, they got satellites beaming this stuff down and we got these two monstrosities in our neighborhood. So, just based on what I heard, I, I can say this, I'm very disappointed as you guys, the, the horse has left the gate, it's going down the back stretch and no one's even talked to us yet. We got this simple notice, there's gonna be more hearings, but the decision's been made. So, that's what I'd like to offer, I'd like you to consider traveling up there. Look at this hundred and sixty-foot tower they're gonna put beside this hundred and ten-foot water tower that we live with, that we're fine with. And if you live in that neighborhood, tell me what you think.
Mark, at one point, there were two water towers on that site, the Rocket and the Big Mac. Do you remember when the Rocket came down?
That's before my time.
Anybody notice how the Rocket was? 'Cause that was significantly higher than the current tank.
I remember, I mean, I was here at the time, I can see.
I, I bet it's close to a hundred and sixty.
It wasn't that much taller, it wasn't that much taller.
Was it?
In terms of your comments about notice, this is probably the second time it's come before this board and it came up at town meeting as well when we talked about, um, the design study. This may, I'm not sure if the, the butters have been noticed, but this is still an open discussion, there's no concept of design that we've done?
Well, it just, it just sounds like it's, it's much farther down the track. It's, the decision's been made, it's just a question of how, it's what it sounds like to me. He referenced they've had numerous meetings about this.
I think that's because.
I know there's only one before this board that at least I'm aware of, that I found on, online. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not mad at you, you guys, but I'm just saying, you know, in light of what I'm hearing here, this being the first notice that we've received, you know, it's kinda stunning. I mean, he's talking about having this tower built by next August, it's less than a year away here almost.
Yeah.
A little bit more than a year away.
Maybe we can talk about the timet, timetable for involvement here.
But it's still a proposal, no decision's been made at this point.
When would we expect?
Yeah, well, yeah.
When would we expect to have concept of appearance or concept of, uh, design documents? I mean, there's probably three or four ways to construct such a thing, proposal, proposals to construct.
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Paul Bergman, my company, Bergman and Associates, we're engineers. In the last few years, we've done similar projects for the town of Framingham and another one for the town of Bedford, which is actually, uh, the tower's going up as this meeting is taking place. The, the whole concept of, of what the tower's gonna look like, how high it's gonna be, from which vantage points, which streets and, and whatever, it can be seen within the community. Those questions can be answered in part by, by photo renderings, where they fly a weather balloon at the, at the altitude of the tower. And then, uh, a driver in a vehicle with Hi-Or, a GPS and, and camera drives all around the community and maybe even outside the community. And, and then from that work, we put together renderings and maps as to depicting where the tower can be seen and to what extent. And, and the height of the tower, i- i- if I may, that's a, that's a really important, um, number that can, you can only arrive at that after a fair amount of homework. You don't want a tower that's too short because as, as was mentioned earlier, uh, it might be able to clear the, the new water tank. By the same token, um, there's good reason not to have a tower that's too high either. The carriers, contrary to what might be common belief, don't wanna have antennas that are too high because then it overshoots, um, users, uh, within the general vicinity of the tower itself. So there's like a certain area that they wanna be within. Bedford was actually limited because, the town of Bedford was limited at their water tank site because the tower is in the glide slope of a Hanscom Air Base. It's not near a glide slope, it's right in a glide slope. So the FAA actually dictated the height of that tower. That was kind of an unusual situation. I've talked to Ryan and, and Jeff and, um, there's no airports really in proximity, so the FAA, their decision might not be as important as it was for the Bedford project.
But in terms of aesthetics, not just raw height, but in terms of aesthetics, appearance, construction methods?
Yeah.
How could, how could, how could we be in a position to show alternative concepts for butters to look at what alternatives might exist? Those of us driving down the Mass Pike occasionally see that, that isn't really a pine tree over there, but it takes, you have to know where to look sometimes, those sorts of things. I imagine there's other creative options that the industry's come up with.
There's actually, uh, um, fake water tanks. I'm, I'm serious, uh, there's been water tank towers that are constructed out of fiberglass with antennas inside the tank, if you will. That's somewhat unusual. Uh, there's the tree towers. If anybody's on, been on Route Two East, you're around the Harvard, Massachusetts neighborhood and there's a, there's a tree tower that that particular planning board demanded of the carriers and it's, it, it looks like a huge shrub, I, I mean, it doesn't really look like a tree. And, and, and a galvanized tower, um, when you first galvanize steel, it, it has a shiny, it, it, it has a shine to it. But in a very short amount of time, the finish dulls, just like guardrail on the side of the highways. It dulls just because of oxidation of the atmosphere, so it turns more of a gray color. But, um, to try to get back to your question about options, you, you have the tree towers, the whole fake water tank, I'm not sure that would be appropriate. They have what are called monopoles, it's like a tapered steel pole. That's one option. Then they have another lattice-type tower, um, which on a dollar-for-dollar basis is the most efficient tower that you can buy. And that's the, that's the towers that Framingham and Bedford actually went with. Bedford is in a, is in a similar but different situation from Redding. They have a standpipe in their community within stone throw of, um, Route Three, North and South. And the DE, that, that standpipe still has from, some useful life left in it. But the DEP was all over the town to do something with that particular structure because there were so many antennas and cables welded, bolted onto that tank that they couldn't even paint it anymore. So the DEP really started to come down on that community, that pushed them into doing similar to what you folks are considering. And their new tower actually just got installed the last couple of days. And their new tower actually just got installed the last couple of days. So, they're, they're well on their way towards moving all the antennas and equipment from the standpipe over onto the tower. Then they can paint their standpipe. I mean, Reading, you know, you're replacing your structure, but there's similarities between the two projects.
So, I mean, it's clear why we have to move the antennas. We have to repair or replace the water tower. But is that the only location that a cell tower could go on? I mean, it's there because it was an existing water tower and it was a high point. But have other locations been scouted out that might be less intrusive? That if we have to move it and build it, does not necessarily have to be built over there unless that's the only location? And I don't, have you looked at other, other locations potentially that might be?
Topography comes into play. Topography comes into play when you're talking about propagation of cell coverage. To answer your question, we can look at other locations. Any locations don't come, pop into my head of that are at a higher elevation?
Well, is that not only higher, but almost the perfect geographic center of the town? Is that really what's driving it?
Is there a physical plant that you've got a provision to get up there as well? Or is it just power is really all you need?
There's power there already. Again, there's a lot of, there's a...
Is there vendor wiring that's gotta be provisioned up there as well?
No, that would all be, that would all be supplied by the carriers when they move to, they're gonna update all their wiring when they do that, if they were to. There's already power on site and I believe fiber on site at that location. So, the infrastructure is in place.
At that site?
At that site.
Andy, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to ask the, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Mark.
Mark. To reiterate what the chair said, I think, to sort of paraphrase what you said, or I think the horse hasn't really left the gate yet. The jockey is just sort of telling us the racetrack that the horse may be going down. So, we're gonna be having more public hearings about what the racetrack will look like, so to speak. I would like to ask you to repeat what you said about you think that the cell, cell service is moving towards multiple-point source signals rather than the single tower concept?
It absolutely is. Absolutely it's. I know this firsthand. Small cells. As a matter of fact, it'd be very lucrative for this town. If the municipal light plant owns most of the poles in this town.
About half of them, yeah.
But I can tell you that the carriers are all focused on small cell sites now to increase capacity and fill gaps. So, it's one thing I haven't heard discussed that absolutely should be looked into. You may not need a cell tower in this town. But, you know, just on that point, has anyone considered incorporating new cell tower technology? If you're replacing the water tank, why don't you, as part of the new design, incorporate the cell service and the antennas into that design? I mean, if you're replacing it, you've got the structure there. It's gonna be that high. And you can have it built properly so you can maintain it easily and you can charge the carriers. Because the carriers are just gonna pass the cost on to their customers at the end of the day. So, I just throw it on the table as something to consider.
Is there a smarter design that tried to combine a new water tower with a appropriately-designed tower superstructure? Is that, is that even a possibility? In other words, what you've got today is an old-fashioned water tower where somebody bolted on five different carriers' worth of equipment with no attention to galvanic corrosion, maintenance, hazard protection, fall protection?
The water tower wasn't designed to hold cell.
But if you started with a clean sheet of paper and said, okay, here's the tower. Here's the infrastructure to allow the electronic component on top of it. Still allowing the painting and maintenance. Is that even possible or must, is the only?
I'm sure anything's possible to answer your question.
I asked the question in the wrong way. Is it practical, was the question?
We have staging.
I would say from, from a standpoint of a water tower, a water tank versus a cell service site, the answer is no. I mean, we've come to the conclusion where we would love to have no cell carriers on our tank. The water tower is just simply that, a water tower. It made sense back in the day when towns may have been looking for some sort of revenue and so, and these water tanks were there as part of a, an easy solution to put carriers on them. You know, and towns were looking for revenue, so of course it made sense. Now Bedford, Framingham, town of Reading, I'm sure other communities are gonna start having this problem with maintaining and painting their tanks and having these carriers on there. We could certainly ask the question and look and see if...
Let me try one more time. The tank at Bear Hill is flat on top, right? It's a big cylinder. Is that true?
Yeah, it has a...
Little bevel.
It has a pointed roof, I believe, on it.
Just a, okay.
Yeah, it is a conical roof, I guess.
Yeah. I could imagine that you'd have some sort on the conical roof, a superstructure that would be the electrical component. You'd still have maintenance ability to paint everything, but you'd have a superstructure. You'd take advantage of the base height that the tank allows you and you'd still have the ability to kind of put this as a cherry on top. I don't know if that's practical, but it strikes me as a clever thing to consider.
I'm sure it could be, I'm sure we can ask the question and look at it.
As opposed to today where we have the Big Mac, you know, this space, this flying saucer in space with these antennas bolted to the side. This is part of the creative...
Yeah, to answer your question, I don't know, I don't know the answer.
The Delaney's comments are actually, are pretty clever, I think. You know, there's maybe another way to solve this problem.
I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure we can look in, look into that and see if it is practical.
Other questions from the public? Just stand up, say your name, your address, and let us know what's on your mind.
Mike Lacy, Nine Beacon Street, obviously Reading. I looked into this myself and my wife and I, all inclusively. I don't want my picture taken. Thank you. We looked into this and I pose this all inclusively. Not only is it an eyesore, what's the added health risk associated with this? Looking for that, I have, I have. Have you guys done your research on it?
Can I ask a question, Andy? Aren't they actually moving the broadcasters further away from the people?
That's the proposal. There's currently already carriers on... There's currently already carriers on, on the tank.
Okay.
Five carriers on the tank today. This is not new carriers. This is taking the five that are on there today and moving five to a different location.
Higher up.
Higher up.
Higher up.
Higher up.
So, you're gonna remove a water tower?
Right.
And put a cell tower?
No, no, we're gonna remove a water tower and put up a water tower in its place. The water tower needs to go back in the same location. In addition, the cell service that's on that tower needs to go somewhere. We have contracts. We're discussing the vehicle to replace those five carriers' worth of equipment in some fashion. A second tower, an idea to put it on top of a new tower. But there's no new risk here. The carriers are on the tower now and have been for years, decades.
And what's that gonna do to property value?
They're on the tower now.
Okay, so when you, when you construct a cell tower, what's gonna happen to the property value? It's gonna be an eyesore.
Well, that's why we're talking about alternatives. We've heard about a potential for a tower that's another tank. There were two tanks on that site twenty years ago. We took one down due to its dilapidated state. The facility is built to have industrial and municipal equipment on it. I understand your point about putting the tower there, but in terms of the equipment, it's already there. The equipment we're talking about, the facility, the cabling, it's already on the grounds now, operating right now. Your Verizon phone is talking to the tower and you make a call. So, I, in terms of the equipment, that's the discussion we're having right now is what should, what form and substance should that tower or the replacement for the electronics take?
And I was in agreement with Mr. Delaney?
Yeah.
That this is already in, bullet's already in the chamber, so to speak.
No, it's not. This is just...
Not even the twenty-five percent design?
Not even the twenty-five percent?
We haven't even started designing.
It's not even funded. We're just talking about it.
Well, the design's funded.
The concept of the design is funded, but there's no execution to go off and get it done.
Now, in what other towns would it be, have this type of cell service or capacity in one location in a residential neighborhood? Because every, every, when you mentioned Framingham, this gentleman over here mentioned Bedford, you were talking about the Mass Pike and those trees. We all know those. You know, there, that's an industrial neighborhood and the Mass Pike. You're talking about Route Three. You're talking about Beacon Street and Auburn Street. In a residential neighborhood where there's a lot of young kids. I'm not here, I'm thirty-five. That's fine. You know, call it midlife if you want. You know, it is what it is. But I'm here because I got two young kids. And I know that the research I've done is the negative effects on this radiation. Again, nobody can tell me, even the ones that are there, I don't even like the ones that are there. Nobody can say that they run horizontally. They don't. And to increase that capacity to whatever, you're not gonna, you're not gonna instruct anything new in not having improved more efficiently, efficiently. Or hold, be able to hold more, more fiber optics, anything of that sort. Just doesn't happen. So, it's gonna be stronger. It's gonna be more powerful. It's gonna be enhanced. It's gonna be improved. It's gonna create more radiation. It's gonna create more energy coming off it. See what I'm saying? That's what I'm talking about. And to have potentially one of those fake shrubs up there right across from my house? I, if I, if that was the case, I would've moved somewhere else.
Let me be clear and clarify what I said. I was only asking what other alternatives existed. And I used that as a convenient example that we all know. I wasn't suggesting...
It doesn't even parallel.
I just wanted to...
Mass Pike in Auburn, in Auburn and Beacon.
You're absolutely right. I did it only to trigger the conversation. It's an example we all know.
So, let's, let's use analogies that make sense, that, that, that are...
What would you use?
That's why I asked. What other neighborhoods or what other communities, surrounding communities, Melrose, Wakefield, Stonem, North Reading, have a cell tower in a closely-knit residential community? That's what I asked. Not talking about Mass Pike. I'm not talking about Route Three.
I can't answer that. Do you know that?
That's an FCC-regulated area, correct? About the siting of towers?
There's a permit associated with the...
Why aren't cell towers near, constructed right next to schools? Another one of my questions.
I think they can go on private parcels that are non-industrial.
Why aren't they, why, why a cell tower's not constructed right near schools? Because of the health, additional negative health risks that are associated with it.
Well, the other possibility is you need a flat area for schools because you have kids and you need a high area for antennas for signal.
Why universally? Take a look at the surrounding communities. Do some research. You'd be surprised. I did. Trust me, guys. I appreciate your time. I do. I got better things to do than come down here and fight this, like I said, quarter night at night. But obviously, the cons outweigh the pros. That's why I'm here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ryan, and the question of, the public safety question's gonna be one that folks are gonna ask. The response that it's there today is an accurate one, but it's not necessarily responsive one. People are gonna wanna know, do we have a vehicle or does there exist an industry vehicle to kind of convey that, the signal radiation or?
FCC. FCC.
And how much comes out of the average cellphone, too, compared to that?
Right, but if we wanted to present that to laypeople so that they could understand it in their terms and present it in folks that are non-engineering terms, is there a vehicle to do that?
That would be helpful, I think.
The, the town could hire a consultant to generate a report to that end.
There's nothing off the shelf here.
There is existing, has to be existing research.
There are studies, there are studies about radiation from cell towers, from, from electrical transmission towers. But what I was trying to say is that the town could solicit the services of a, of a special consultant for, for this particular site if you were interested.
Okay. I think that's a topic that's gonna come up. And I'm thinking less about a report and more about a human being that comes and speaks on the subject matter. And in non-engineering, non-impenetrable language kind of explains it in terms that the average citizen can make sense out of it. It's probably an important thing that we need to cover. Because even though there's five there now, there'll be five when they're, you know, if the project goes forward and there'll be three times the distance than it is at the moment, which is a huge difference electrically. Folks are still gonna have questions, so I think that's an important area. And then the topic of alternative constructions, whether it's a lattice, whether it's a water tower-ish, the parallel what's already up there, there'll have to be some concept designs that go up and get reactions from folks.
Or locations.
Or other locations. Other comments? Sir, just stand, give your name. I'm sorry, I was pointing at this gentleman here, sorry. Just stand, give your name, and tell us where you live.
Bob Connor, Seven Beacon Street. Is it safe, a couple questions. Is it safer to have a higher tower than, this would be higher than the water tower? Is there a cellphone expert here? Who owns an expert here? Okay. And I was under the impression there are only four carriers. So, is there a limit to how many carriers that will be on the new tower? It's five now. I thought the limit was four. I don't know if town meeting did that, but use five.
I think it may be four.
There was a fifth that was vying to get on, wasn't there?
It's an open horizon. It's three with a possibility. There's three with the possibility of a fourth.
Okay. So, we stand corrected. There are three today with a fourth vying to get on today? Plus, plus police and fire and public service and all that.
I guess we're not fighting police and fire. That's probably given. But this person was in town meeting and I got the impression that the town meeting had settled on four. I don't know if that's a magic number, so maybe you people know. And I guess, I guess the big thing is safety. I, my kids are all grown, but my Mike's neighbor and that would be my primary concern. The second is the property values. When they're on the water tower, you don't really notice them. But having a cell tower with that sixteen-story building, a hundred and sixty feet, is that right?
Height hasn't been settled on yet.
Somebody said a hundred and sixty feet.
That's just, just for picture's sake, it's, it hasn't been, we haven't determined what height it's going to be yet.
How high is the current water tower?
Around a hundred and ten feet.
Hundred and ten.
Theoretically, it could be five stories higher than the water tower if it was a hundred and sixty.
Theoretically.
If, if it was safer having a higher tower, that offsets the negative of looking at it. So, it's kind of a trade-off, obviously. But anyway, those, those are my concerns.
I appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you. Steve?
Stephen Crook, One Thirty-Seven Pleasant Street. So, not in the neighborhood. Excuse me, the difficulty you have is you have two problems. One, you're dealing with a water tower. Two, a jurisdiction over. But the cell tower jurisdiction is the United States FCC. So, your hands are really kind of tied, are they not, with respect to the cell companies' desires to site towers and locate towers and regulations?
I'm not, I don't know, but I would imagine if it were immediately adjacent to the current site, that's contemporaneous. That's just an extension of what's there. If it were to be recited, those other questions probably come to play.
I mean, there's a lot, a lot of what you might wanna limit with cell towers you can't because of US FCC regulations, which makes it hard for you to...
It's hard, right. It's certainly outside of the scope for tonight's discussion. I agree.
Meanwhile, this legitimate discussion, it'd make more sense to build a tower for cellular and a tower for water because it was indicating if the DEP has some issues with the maintaining. Or does it make sense to integrate them? That certainly is in scope. Just a thought.
Thank you, Steve. Dan?
Yeah, I was just looking on the American Cancer Society website and they do comment on energy levels around typical cellular base stations. And they are very specific in saying, "At ground level near typical cellular base stations," meaning towers, "the amount of RF radio frequency energy is thousands of times less than the limits for safe exposure set by the US Federal Communication Commission and other regulatory authorities. It is very unlikely that a person could be exposed to RF levels in excess of these limits by just being near a cellphone tower." That's from the American Cancer Society.
Yes, sir.
Did they set the asbestos limits years ago, Dan?
You have to ask them.
No, I think the point is we need to, there's plenty of stuff on the web. You need to give folks a sense of comfort. You'll need subject matter extras to speak in layman's terms. I can completely appreciate that.
I would just say, if you own a cellphone, better throw it away if you're worried about the RF energy.
Yeah, the comments...
A lot more's coming out of your phone.
Yes, ma'am.
Elizabeth Witherm, Twenty-Eight Auburn Street. I am concerned about what the property, what this will do to property values. I am concerned about the look and feel of our neighborhood. It, having a very, very large structure like that in a very, very small neighborhood. We do not have a lot of space between houses. There isn't a lot of green space and, and everything. It really will have a major effect. I really would love to know that they're guaranteed that it will improve cell cover... I really would love to know that they're guaranteed that it will improve cell coverage in the schools area, because coverage is hideous at the high school, at Coolidge, at the Y, at Birch Meadow. I mean, it, 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 and I really question about whether or not it, they really will, if, if it will really improve it. Because if they're going to be replacing with what they have, it's not gonna, it, all it's gonna do is raise it up a little bit, but it's not gonna increase the strength. So they're probably gonna wanna put stronger, you know, cell towers, other, you know, whatever the devices are, up there, which will have an effect on, you know, the, the, could have an effect on the health of the community. So those are things that really need to be seriously considered before this is done. Also, really curious if this is tied to any of the work that's being mapped out on our street now, already, because there's lots of spray paints all over Auburn Street. And we don't know if, when this is supposed to start, and when, I know you said this is not-
I'm gonna toss that question to Ryan, you wanna speak to that?
Hang on.
No, this, this has nothing to do with any of that.
Okay, so it's not starting yet.
There's some utility infrastructure work that's gonna be happening on, on the water mains, but that, but that's it.
Okay.
Gas.
And the gas main is, they're doing work out there as well.
Okay. When would this start? I mean, I know that we're not, you know, we don't have the final idea, the, that final concept, but what is the projected start date of this happening for the water tower and the cell tower? And when is the projected end date of this set, of whatever is second? I've heard one of them-
We don't have a projected date now, we don't know how long the, the public process will go. I could imagine that the public process could take several meetings alone, by themselves. And then there's a design phase and a, a public reaction to that. And some of these other more clever ideas may take some additional work for economic's sake. We've already talked about explaining the, in simple layman's terms, what we're doing, so folks get comfort level. Your point is a good one. I'm not certain whether the companies are putting more powerful stuff up there, or they simply have a better shot of being able to direct with the signals they have over the trees, and therefore, same as what they have, it's just a better angle on their target, a better. I, I live two hundred yards from the water tower. I can't get Verizon in my house, I have to go out to the porch to make a phone call. I could hit it with a rock, but I can't get a signal in my kitchen. So I know what you're talking about. But I think all of that's gotta play out publicly, and I'm very sensitive to the whole property values discussion. My only comment is that, that site has been used in the last two decades as, for two separate water towers. And maybe there's a clever way to kinda play into that, that theme going forward, to, to make it look like a second water tower, if it's a different functioning entity.
I think it would be important to have a comparison of property values in other communities that have cell towers and/or water towers, or both, in a very close residential space.
Thank you for your comments. Any, any other public comment?
One final?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Friedman seemed to be the only one interested in the small cell sites. I can tell you the carriers have gotten legislation passed in ten states so far, just this past year, to bring efficiency to the permitting of those sites. That legislation will be filed in Massachusetts. Within the next six to twelve months, it's happening all over the country. It's really something you should take a look at.
Yeah, I wouldn't read into any reaction here in terms of interest. Are you in the business? You seem like you know a lot about this. Do you do this for?
I'm a lawyer, and I, and I do a little political stuff.
Thank you, thank you for comments. It's fascinating stuff.
I'd like to look into it, I really would.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
My only comment, again, is if, if these smaller cell forwarding stations are put in, if it's safer or less safe, because it may provide better coverage to the schools, et cetera, but if it's less safe, then I'm torn to having a safer solution.
Yeah. I understand. Safety is preeminent in all, all that we're doing here, so. Any other public comment? Any other comment from the board?
I think we have a lot, I think we have a lot of work to do. I mean, the last thing, the last thing we wanna do is, is shove a project down a neighborhood's throat. But, actually, no buts. And, you know, we still have to balance, so, I mean, we have to deal with the water tower. And then we have to deal with removing the cell, the, you know, the, the carrier stuff off of that while we repair that. So it, it's, it, it has to get dealt with. It could be an opportunity to look at more creative kinds of solutions. But I, 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 I hope people leave here knowing that, you know, there's no secret plan that we're taking off the shelf and just gonna get done. I mean, there's a lot of questions here that, just in this conversation, that I learned about. I didn't know that you could potentially look at, you know, smaller kinds of things. So I think there's a lot of work to do. I think the public safety stuff, I think, is really important. From the stuff that I've read, there, there really isn't a public safety thing, but I think that when you're gonna build something new, it's probably a good idea to take a fresh look at that. And just, you know, if we have to bring somebody in here, or maybe involve our Board of Health in looking at things, or making a presentation, I think that that's important. And in the long run, we certainly wanna build anything that's gonna be obsolete in five years. So I think it's a lot of stuff to digest, and, you know, I think you have a commitment from this board that we're not just gonna ram something down.
Eric, you said the Board of Health would be weighing in on RF?
No, I'm just saying, is that potentially, we can ask them to, I mean, that, that's something-
I think that's way beyond their purview and beyond their expertise.
I'm, I'm just saying, it, it, we can bring in somebody else.
We can bring in a subject matter expert, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be better.
Do we have a, I'm sorry.
A question for Ryan. The question on these nan, micro towers or distributed towers, I know that's not DPW's subject matter, but it might be interesting to include in the conversation. I don't know how we do that, but we should make a note going forward, to at least include that in, whether that has a mitigating factor, or. Sorry, do you?
Mr. Delaney's point, there's an acronym DAS that's often used for these micro sites. They're as simple as like an old-fashioned automobile aerial, up on top of a telephone pole, with a oversized shoebox of equipment that's bolted to the pole, and that's actually a micro site. They're common in urban areas and on heavily traveled arteries in urban areas, because towers can't typically be put on like ComAv in Boston, for example. You might be able to get antennas on top of a building. But you're seeing more and more of these, and, and from our experience, the, the networks are gonna be a, a marriage and a combination of these little micro DAS sites and the traditional sites. The towers are the water tanks, or antennas on the side of a building, or a smokestack. Because, for example, the, the four carriers at Bedford, if, if, if they could've just immediately switched to these little micro sites, the little areas on, on telephone poles, they might've considered that. But all four carriers are just automatically moving on to the new structure. For, for, for that particular site. I don't know if that helps.
Are those little DAS distributed antenna systems, are they individual by vendor? Do you need four of those if you have four sites, or are they also shared?
You do, sir. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, and I'm not sure-
I'd love every street coming in here complaining about it.
Do you have to run new wire on the poles to support those also, or not?
The, the little DA, the little DAS?
Yeah. They're just repeaters?
How do you feed it?
You could probably carry the box of equipment, you know, without too much effort, and, and the antenna is just typically three, four feet.
If they repeat from one to the other, you don't have to physically connect them?
They, they don't, they, they're not on, they're not on every single pole, every sequential pole. They're, they're, they're scattered.
How does the downlink get made, the downlink?
That, that has to do with their propagation models that, that was talked about earlier.
As a repeater.
And, and as a matter of fact, for your particular site, dollars to donuts that the three or four carriers, however many you have, are gonna have to rerun their propagation models. Just, just from moving the antennas, what, a couple hundred feet from the water tank?
Less than that.
Never mind, never mind wholesale relocation, because the, I'm, I'm not a radio engineer, but I'm in the business long enough to know how it works, and they basically try to have slightly overlapping signals from any given tower site in their network. So if one of those sites goes away, or gets moved, it affects their coverage.
We should include that in the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Delaney, for bringing that up, that's a good topic. Any other public comment before we move on? All right, well, thank you very much.
I have a process question. So, so that, look, there's a lot of work that needs to get done here, from a new, this is sort of a new guy, new guy question. How do we, how does that work get done? How do we, what do we do from here? Where do we go from here?
I think one is, we've gotta digest what we've heard tonight in terms of these distributed antennas. Two, we've gotta understand what the range of options are that could be done with current techniques and what other towns have been doing. I think we've gotta understand, get a rendition of what these things might look like. Or schedule another public meeting, report on what we've learned. Come up with a notional schedule, if, for the water tower component alone, because that's gotta be dealt with in any case. And lay that all out in terms of a schedule and put it, present it to the public.
Alternatives.
Will you be assigning homework, giving us homework?
Not tonight.
More to the staff, I think.
These guys.
This is beyond our subject matter expertise, for sure.
But we would ask them to, like, propose, what do you think the next steps are? A rough timetable for when we'll see you again, and what, where do we go from here?
Again, to echo, what you've said, certainly gonna have to digest what has been given to us tonight, and then go from there, and if it means hiring another, you know, consultant specific for certain things, we will. This is very specific, and it's a specialty beyond what your normal engineer would do. So we would have to look at that. And then moving on from there, we, maybe we do some renditions and renderings, and look at some other alternatives and placements, and, and go from there. For the folks in the audience, I, I hope you take away tonight that we're treating this seriously, and we're listening to you as if we were living on Beacon Street. This is a public utility that's there today, and we're just trying to find a way to preserve, for the public safety aspect, what's there in the least disruptive way we can. We've heard some clever conversations tonight that we wanna factor into it. And again, this is not our, my subject matter area, so I can't comment, but we'll, we'll do due diligence, we'll be back to you with some of the proposals and concepts that we've talked about already. Yes, sir?
My Debra God, Thirty Seven Auburn Street. Pete and Ryan. As far as the water tower, are we looking for storage, or are we looking for gravity?
A replacement?
Because if we, if we start from the ground up, as far as storage, we can increase the capacity. But if you're looking for gravity, then you need the height.
Yeah, we, we need to keep the height, the gravity.
The whole height?
The height of the tower.
Which you can't go with that?
You can't. No, that's what dictates the pressure in the tower.
Need a hundred and ten feet ahead.
If anything, we'd like to go up five feet.
Well, there's, there's some headspace in that.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, and thank you. Be in touch. Thanks. Recession, while folks empty out here, just real quick. Thank you, everybody.
Am I next?
Am I next? In the packet as well, but I pulled them out because soon as I've been.
All right, Sharon, it's all yours.
Okay, so on June twenty first, we issued bonds and the issuance was for the three million dollar settlement for the high school. It also was for three point, I think it's three million four sixty for water main work and then two million, two point four million for sewer station work. And when we started to work with our bonding agent, we discovered that for the high school debt, MSBA does owe us one point four eight nine million dollars. And we originally thought that we needed to use that to reduce the excluded debt because we thought some of the debt we had outstanding was the MSBAs.
Right.
But in two thousand and twelve, we had refunded that debt and a lump sum payment was made by the MSBA to pay off their portion. So that one point four eight nine, based on what the bond council's view and the bonding agent's view, was really to be applied towards the settlement. So that's why we ended up banning because they said, well, okay, now you just need to do your final reimbursement and the MSDA will pay you. Because they didn't pay us because we withheld from the contractor. They didn't pay their portion of the bill because we didn't pay our portion of the bill.
But now we paid the bill.
And so now we've paid the bill, so now I have to put in another reimbursement request. The, the other hold.
What will that be, Sharon?
One million four eighty nine. So that's why we banned for one million four ninety. Because they said you can't borrow the three million dollars because you have this money that's coming in. And they did not agree with us that we had borrowed it. Because originally we did borrow for the MSBA, I think that the first issuance was for thirty five million. And it was partially our portion, but some of the MSBA, and that's not uncommon, they would just pay you back with the interest and such. And then they changed the way they did things and they wanted to buy out of the loan when we did our refunding because we got a great rate. And so at that point, I think they purchased out and I think we thought we still had a portion of it that was MSBA. So for that reason, we had to ban half of the money. So we will end up borrowing less than what we told town meetings, so that will probably be a rescinded portion of that authorization.
Ban is always less than a year.
It's temporary debt, yeah. And we should probably get the money from the MSBA soon. The problem I'm having with the, with that last reimbursement is because we have litigation. If you're, back then, we had an agreement with the MSBA, I don't think they do it anymore, but if you're successful in litigation, they'll pay a portion of the litigation. Well, there were definitely portions, we weren't successful.
We were not successful.
We were not successful, but there were definitely items that were awarded in our favor.
Right, we were a few.
So Ramires was working with KMP to try and identify the, the costs related to the items that came out in our favor so that we could put that on our last reimbursement request. It's been six months, we're still waiting, so I don't know.
You don't have the bill from the lawyer yet?
We have, we've paid the bill, but they have to actually break it down to the portions of time that has to do with the item.
So we paid it before we realized that we had to have them actually react.
Yeah, they actually have to break it down to a different level to get the MSBA to pay.
That could be a long time.
So I don't know if we're going to see that anytime soon, so I might be forced to do a reimbursement for the settlement. And then once we get something from KMP, do a final with the legal.
To apply for an additional reimbursement. So if we tie the reimbursement directly to the construction portion for now, that should cause a timely reimbursement.
Yes.
Because honestly, based on our experience with that law firm?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen a lot of correspondence going from Ramires to KMP. Where are you with this? We need this, we want to do our reimbursement, because MSBA is chasing us. Are you done sending your reimbursement requests? You know, have you sent your?
They want to be out, they want to be out.
Is there a drop data from, from MSBA about, like, if you don't have your project close up a certain amount of time, you leave money on the table?
Not that I'm aware of, no. I don't think so.
That were true, it would be tough.
Well, they, they knew that we were in litigation. So last year, we had submitted a reimbursement request, request for anything that happened since our final audit and forward. And when they received that, they asked the question, are you done with your litigation? Have you settled it? At the time, I believed we were close, there was a lot of talk that we were trying to settle it. And so I said, I think that we're getting close, they're definitely making offers back and forth. And so they told us that they would wait to pay us because they wanted it to be the final reimbursement and close out the project.
So they don't want us to do it in two pieces?
They really wanted this to be the last reimbursement, which is why I've been waiting. But at this point where we've banned, I really want to put the reimbursement request and let them know that we're waiting on the legal.
This kind of comes back to a, you know, a theme that we talked about earlier. We paid this lawyer. And there are certain things we should have an expectation as a result of that payment.
The same discussion is our first discussion tonight.
Yeah, it is our first, yes, exactly tied back to the, to the earlier discussion.
It is a labor intensive way that we're asking him to look at it, for sure. I mean, it's definitely a different way we're asking him to look at it, like, how much time did you spend on this item that we were successful in? You know what I mean, break his time down to, do you know what I mean?
I know exactly what you mean.
I think it changes how he has to look at things, it's not just, oh, this is all the hours I spent. He's got to kind of pull out everything that was related to the.
Well, there's a certain accountability now that he, I'm sure he's very uncomfortable with. And I'm sure that's why you're going to see it delayed. And I think we have to be very firm about this.
Yeah.
And the litigation cost for those items we succeeded on is reimbursable, and that's the issue.
That's what you're asking them to, to itemize it on the bill.
Just the litigation expense. And to refresh our memories, with the total litigation costs, not the settlement, just the litigation.
How much was it total?
We've never heard that number.
Never heard what the representation.
The last time I saw it was upwards of that seven hundred thousand for the litigation, but I'd have to revisit.
The most recent one. But this is a second law firm.
You mean the KMP?
We need to look at the, we, there would be a, we should, since the town actually pays that bill. It would be nice to know, because that question is going to come up.
Yeah, for sure.
Have you ever heard what it costs us to defend ourselves?
Front to back.
Yeah, because the, the costs are in two different places. Some of it was charged to the project when they, when they first started litigation and then at some point, we were like, well, we need to start taking.
That was not proper, correct.
That's not the proper way to do it.
We're talking about the escrowed funds they were charging against.
There's a, there's a capital project that's set up for the high school project.
Yep.
So when they started litigation, what they were doing was charging the legal bills to the capital project, which I don't think was technically correct.
Correct.
So then, when Bob and I were looking at it, he said, let's, let's pull this out and start charging the legal bills.
There's a long list of what was done incorrectly.
But then when the funds were escrowed, when there was, they were charging, there were legal bills charged against the escrowed amount as well. So that the total, there was two million in escrow.
I don't recall there being an escrow.
When there, when the payments were withheld, the funds that were withheld were escrowed. Right, the payments that would have went to the contractor that we disputed were put in escrow.
Not to my knowledge, they were all kept into the project, the money just remained in the project, but because they were spending the legal money.
That's what the process should have been.
That's what should have happened, but they actually were spending the money on legal.
I heard that it was escrowed at town meeting, you're saying it wasn't?
I, I'm, I'm.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Not to my knowledge, yeah.
You know, we're talking about two point three million dollars that was withheld. And when all the dust settled, we had eight hundred thousand dollars left in this escrowed account.
Correct.
So it went somewhere.
But I think it went towards legal, yeah.
Now, some of it went into, into capital, you know, work.
Yeah.
That was unfinished or had to be redone, so I do know some of that happened.
And there was definitely a settlement with that bracket and Lewis, Lucas has done.
Correct. I, there needs to be, this comes back to a demand for transparency around how public funds are being spent. And, you know, we need to get clear answers as to how that was accounted for.
Well, now that the settlement.
I don't think you have them, Sharon, I don't think they're, I don't think you've really.
Well, the, the system that we have, the mini system that we have, went into place like two thousand eight, so the project was almost done. Like, so it's all in an old system, all I have is the actual invoices.
Printout.
And the boxes of invoices that make up that project because they were in an older system. So some of it's immunitas, but most of it is not. So that's what makes it a little harder to track, you know what I mean?
Sure, I, I clearly understand the problem.
What exactly happened, you know?
Do you think you have a good chance at coming up with assessments, maybe not precision, but is there a way to go back and kind of construct?
Where that money went?
Yeah.
For sure. There's, we have the paperwork, so it just, it's time to go through it.
It's a stake in terms of reimbursement, once.
I don't know.
And that's the part that, that's.
The maximum reimbursement we are due is the one point four eight, there was a cap on the cost. Yeah, the MSBA is only going to pay the one million, plus the legal, the legal was this separate.
Plus the cost of litigation.
On our successful.
On our success.
We weren't successful for a lot, though.
We were successful incidentally to the, to the number. It was very small.
But how much, so do they attribute, will they break it down like, okay, well, you were successful in ten percent of the thing? So you're going to, so it's going to be ten percent of the legal bill?
They had that master judge working on different claims and then he would award one or the other.
Those rolled out in pieces from the master. Okay, so, so we'd see those during the time that I was chair and, and read in. You would see some of them come out and be favorable to us. And that might be eighty thousand dollars worth of expenses or something.
Small things down.
And then there would be six hundred thousand in the other direction. And I'm, you know, I'm exaggerating, I don't know if I'm exaggerating or not exaggerating, I'm trying to.
You order a magnitude, I don't think you're exaggerating.
Yeah, I think it was very small in a relative way, which was kind of why the, you know, the firm urging, watching the masters' reports come out is like, get this thing done, this is not going in our direction. And the bill, you know, the interest tab was literally a thousand dollars a day.
On the whole thing, yeah.
I mean, so every, you know, every week that went by was.
Half the settlement is interest, so.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Anyhow, so that being the case, that was why we had to do the ban, so I figured I'd explain that. So on the, June twenty first, we issued six point six million or six million six forty five in bonds at one point five oh three.
Can you say that number again? So the press can hear it?
What?
The interest rate that the town.
One point five oh three, we have a triple A bond rating, so we get some very nice interest rates here, Reading.
Triple A.
Yep, and we got a premium of eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars there, or just under eight hundred and eighteen thousand. So we borrowed less, we do start borrowing by the premium, we always do that. The high school project had language in the actual motion that said that if we received premiums on our issuance, that we would reduce the borrowing and use it towards the project. The water and sewer did not have that language, so I'll have to put the premium in a reserve. And then when we go to our next town meeting, we will ask town meeting to apply the premium to the project. It's just a formality, but, and we, we can make, have language put in place that will make that an automatic for all projects going forward. And, and the projects that have been authorized, yes.
Reduce the project cost immediately.
So that we don't have to do that every time. Because we reduced how much we actually borrowed by the premium, just because it made no sense not to, so.
Certainly.
And then we, we issued the ban at one point oh seven four with Eastern Bank and we got a twelve hundred dollar premium. What else do you need to have here? So essentially, I told you all you needed to know about the high school project and why we had to ban. So what has to happen now is, John, you have motions that need to be.
Pass those to the members, just so they can refer to them, and I'll, I'll need to sign those, so pass them back after.
And you have to sign as the secretary, and then the town.
You sign, you just sign one of them?
Just, I sign all four.
Sign all four.
But those are for you to read, why, why, nobody.
Oh, okay.
You got a purple tag.
Somebody hopefully will move to suspend the reading of it. Do I have to read this all or not?
I don't know, I've never been here when you guys done it, so have you ever read the whole thing? You did it last year, too, you had.
I'll read the whole thing, just to be safe, if you want.
Yeah, I would, I don't know if you can.
Okay. So I'm going to start, my, first part's my certification, ignore that. Moved at the sale of the six million six hundred forty five thousand dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand seventeen bonds of the town, dated June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, the bonds, to Fifth Third Securities, Inc., at the price of seven million four hundred forty nine thousand nine hundred eighty one dollars and ninety seven cents. And accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds will be payable on June fifteenth of the years and in the principal amounts and bear the interest at the respective rates as follows. Year twenty eighteen, amount seven thirty five thousand, interest rate four percent. Year twenty nineteen, amount seven hundred twenty thousand dollars, interest rate four percent. Year twenty twenty, amount seven hundred twenty thousand dollars, interest rate four percent. Year twenty twenty one, amount seven hundred twenty thousand dollars, interest rate four percent. Year twenty twenty two, amount seven hundred fifteen thousand, interest rate four percent. Year twenty twenty three, amount seven hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars, interest rate four percent. Year twenty twenty four, amount seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars, interest rate four percent. Year twenty twenty five, amount seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars, interest rate four percent. Year twenty twenty six, amount four hundred forty five thousand dollars, interest rate four percent. Year twenty twenty seven, amount four hundred forty five thousand dollars, interest rate four percent. Further voted to approve the sale of a one thou, one million four hundred ninety thousand dollar, one point two five percent general obligation bond anticipation note of the town dated June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and payable December fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the note, to Eastern Bank at par and accrued interest plus a premium of one thousand two hundred one dollars and ninety three cents. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, and a final official statement dated July twenty first, two thousand seventeen, the official statement. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice and sale and preliminary official statement dated June sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, and a final official statement dated June twenty first, two thousand seventeen. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events, disclosure undertakings in compliance of S E C rule fifteen C two dash twelve, in such forms as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable, for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to review and update the town's post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures with such changes, if any, as the treasurer and bond council deem necessary, in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. And I think the rest has to do my certification, so I don't, that's the end of the motion.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Can I have those back?
I have a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Five zero. Anything else for tonight, Sharon?
You guys have to sign every one of these tab pages.
What's the difference between blue and purple?
I don't know if there's any difference.
Ran out of blue.
I don't think there is, like, there's a line for all of you to, so.
All right, so. Okay.
The one thing that has to be signed by Dan is what the motions.
That's what I'm doing.
And there are four copies of the motions because.
There's four copies of the motions?
Yeah, I'm signing four, I think it's all identical.
Oh, okay, yeah, you just sign them.
Okay.
Must be a need to have more.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not normally involved in all the signings, so I wouldn't have the answer for why they're four.
Why don't we do that at the end of our meeting tonight?
Right.
Rather than just leave it right there, we'll get to that in a moment. I think we only have one other topic for this evening anyway. Any other topics for Sharon before?
Do you want to, you want to stay here and collect these back, I assume, right?
Yeah.
We'll be done, I think all we have is the extension of.
Yep.
The outstanding.
Climate Committee and we're done.
Yep. We have, that's, that's on my staff, we already auto sign those.
Already done.
That's a Bob thing.
I think the only.
Gentlemen, the only other topic for tonight before we adjourn is the extending the sunset clause for climate advisory committee. As we discussed earlier, this group is due to sunset at the end of the month, they're working on an advisory, I'm sorry, we just ran out of mic. Proposal to come up with language regarding a, a regulation for.
Plastic bag.
For plastic bags and in light of that, I'm proposing that we extend them to the end of this year, to December thirty one of two thousand seventeen. At which point, we'll evaluate the body of work and decide what to do at that point. So if there's no other discussion, I entertain a motion to extend that sunset clause, Dan?
I buried all my motions in here. Will the board of selectmen extend the sunset clause for the climate advisory committee to the date of December thirty first, two thousand seventeen?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion?
Could I move to make an amendment to the motion?
Sure.
To just, so in, in looking at the work that the climate advisory committee is doing, plus this, the hazard mitigation plan, which we're, is not going to go away in the near future, like it or not, as far as applying for grants. They speak about, a couple times, the, the hazard mitigation plan talks about incorporating climate change impacts and climate, climate resilience adaptation components into the mass, town's master.
You're talking about the habit mitigation plan we just looked at tonight?
Right, right, I mean, my, I guess my point is, I think there may, we, the motion, the amendment that I would like to make to the motion is to, to just extend them for two years to July two thousand nine, twenty nineteen. Because I think there will be a need for the climate advisory committee moving forward. And I, and we got an email from the chair, David Zeke, who is here. He could summarize the projects that they have moving forward.
I have no objection, David, you have any comments briefly?
Well, I, I sent that email to each of you, but, but, you know, so we have some ongoing things like the Earth Day Fair, you know, which is an annual event. We have weekly news, articles that we submit to the newspapers now, most, they get published weekly in the, in the local newspapers. Those, those are just ongoing activities, I think are well received in the community. The, the, the projects that we have in our backlog were things we've talked about earlier before we got into the, the bag ban discussion, which was about, and I think we've talked about it here as well, about looking at solar installations, possible solar installations for the tannering, looking at possible electrical vehicle charging stations, that, that in, in cooperation with our M L D. And I think, just in general, right now, I mean, the, the committee is, is a very healthy committee. We don't have problems having, you know, members on the committee, we have people who show up at the committee who are not members, but are interested. And so I think with that level of interest and that level of, of, you know, activity, it's, it's just good to keep the thing, to keep the committee going and not, not risk suspending it and then, and maybe wanting to do something later.
Yeah, the, the purpose of suspending is just give you time for the short term work, I don't think there's any particular statement about the particular date. Yeah, the, the purpose of suspending is just give you time for the short-term work. I don't think there's any particular statement about the particular date. The Climate Advisory Committee, like the ATRAC, is advisor to the Board of Selectmen. And one of the things, we've gotta do a better job at is the board, I think, is giving guidance to these advisory committees as to what topics we want to be advised on and what work they ought to be doing. I think that's been pretty lax on our part. So one of the reasons to kind of keep this closer in on our part is to get some task tension on our part to decide what guidance we're gonna give you. It's not necessarily a comment on the advisory committee, but rather the advisor or us, how are we gonna behave? Anyway, there's a motion on the floor. I'm sorry, Dan?
Yeah, comment on the amendment, Mr. Chairman. We have two committees that are facing sunsetting. One committee is looking at changing its potential form of government, what it's gonna report under. We don't know where that's heading. This group has, has been very stable and is not looking at those kinds of changes. So I'm just wondering, what do we not know tonight that we'll know at the end of December that would cause us to pull back from two years?
That's unknown and unknowable. I think this is more just a question of getting it passed so the group can continue its work and we'll take it up again at a time when we've got a little bit more bandwidth to worry about it. It's no more scientific than that. Any other questions? So we have an amendment to the motion. And do I have a second on the amendment?
I second it.
Okay, we have a second on the amendment. Any other further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment to move the sunset date to, I guess it would be June 30th, 2019, raise your hand. Those against?
Yeah, I guess so. Go abstain.
Why don't you abstain then?
Okay, we're back to the origi, excuse me, back to the original motion. All those in favor of the original motion of a sunset date December 31, 2017, please raise your hand. Okay, five zero. So David, we'll continue your powerful work, your, your important work. We'll, we'll talk again at the end of the year.
And just, just before you leave, Mr. Chair, if I could just say, Dave, before you leave, I hope you don't leave here thinking that the board doesn't value the work that you do just because we didn't extend you two years. That discussion will come, and I think you do provide a lot of things. And, and not only do we, as, since you report to us, you know, wanna give you direction, I would like and hope that the committee gives us, the board, some things to think about going forward, about things that we should be working on. So I don't want you leaving here thinking that the board doesn't appreciate the work that you do. We do. And, and that I look forward to having that discussion at the end of the year and, and looking at some of the things that you want to forward the town on. So thank you for that.
Thank you, David. Any other business to come for the board tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of the mo, move, motion to adjourn, five zero, and it is at 9:33. Good night, everybody.